Uno, uno.
So when this is on, it's only going to the.
Recording in progress.
I'm a kid. Are we ready?
Good evening. Welcome to the Watsonville City Council meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Clark?
Present.
Dutra? Orozco?
Present.
Parker?
Here.
Gidos Carter?
Here.
Salsito?
Her first is here.
And Montesino?
Here.
We have a quorum. Mayor also wanted to make an announcement. Councilmember Dutra did participate in closed session pursuant to AB 2449 under the Joss Cause provision. So he participated this afternoon at 4:30, but he will not be participating in the meeting right now. Thank you.
So I'll put a motion to excuse Councilmember Dutra from the meeting.
I'll second.
Ben, move to second.
Clark? Yes.
Yes.
Dutra? Oh, I'm sorry. Orozco?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Gidos Carter?
Aye.
Salsito?
Aye, and I'm also here.
Montesino? Montesino?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Um, Councilmember Clark, lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Number six is informational items. Reports of disbursements and miscellaneous documentations. So we're going to move on to number seven, consent agenda. We're doing consent agenda before. So this is, all items appearing in the consent agenda are recommended action items that are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the motion. The mayor will allow public input prior to the consent agenda. Any questions on consent agenda before I go out to the public? Nope. We'd like public way to weigh in the consent agenda items. See none or bring it back for council consideration?
Mayor, we do have one person on Zoom.
Oops, forgot Zoom.
Actually, they lowered their hand, so we have nobody.
So moving on, Councilmember Parker.
I just want to point out number seven F and just to say in positive terms Kathleen Croce has done such amazing work with the community, not just for the community, but that what a great project and she continues to enhance our city and bring out, you know, all the people that we, that live here in our diversity. So money will spend.
Councilmember Clark?
Oh, I just wanted to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
So it's been first and second. I'll take opportunity to make a comment for themselves. Thank you, seven K. Thank you for, Michaela Lopez, for, you know, participating in the Latino Affairs Commission. So congratulate her. And just want to make a small comment and say, seven, aye. Final ordinance of related to the downtown was specific by this tremendous amount of years and work dedication from our community partners and the community and staff. So just kudos to all the work. So with that, any other comments?
The person on Zoom raised their hand again. Would you like to entertain that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Eric, go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry. This wasn't for consent item. It was for just a non-agenda item.
That happens a little later in the meeting.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, with that, can we take a roll call for?
Yes, sir. Clark?
Aye.
Dutra? Orozco?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Gidos Carter?
Aye.
Salsito?
Aye.
And Montesino?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. Now we're going to move on to presentations or communication from the public. This is the opportunity to set aside for the public to address the council on not agenda. Agenda lives, not, tongue tied, and any items not on the council agenda, which is in the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented except for any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of all administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters related to council will be noted in the minutes as may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification or report. So this is a part of the community, like the community like to say any items not agendaized.
There she is.
There she is.
On now? Yep, okay. I'm Kathleen Croce, seven F just passed. Thank you so much for that and thank you for your nice comments Ari as well. In anticipation of your saying yes, I have already scheduled cultural convening meetings to get input from the community about what they would like to see with these four sculptures. And they'll be held in the library conference room starting November 1st. And I have post little flyers here. I'd like to have given to the council members and then I'll leave some up here in case anyone in the community would like to have one as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the committee like to weigh in on items not agendaized? See none? Zoom?
Yes, mayor, we have a couple here. Steve, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, good evening, city council, mayor, city officials. From the 15th of this month through the 15th of November, this is additional Indigenous history month for the people of America. And I would like to invite everyone to recognize the fact that our campus, our Cabrillo campus sits just short distance from city hall. And another one in Aptos is on Amma Mutson tribal land. We have an acknowledgement statement at the beginning of each meeting, acknowledging that not only did we not, not only did the state not provide any remuneration for the tribe, yet also basically ignored their claims to the fact that land was belonging to them. So I'm asking everybody to send a letter or a note to our Board of Trustees and President Matt Wetstein reminding him that it's now long overdue that the Amma Mutson and other indigenous people of the central coast had the chance to name the college that is on their land and the land belongs to them. And I'm going to say to all of you that this is an injustice that is long overdue being remedied. And I'm hoping that you all keep in mind the staying of Mark Twain, which was it's never the wrong time to do the right thing. So please go on Facebook, Paul Ronian, and nextdoor.com reminding people it's Indigenous Americans History Month and the college needs to be renamed by them. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is Eric still there?
Eric, go ahead. Eric, this is your opportunity to talk under oral communications on non-agendaized items. There's another mayor. I'll move on to the next. Mary, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, is this a general public comment or is this on agenda? This is general public comment. Okay, wonderful, wonderful. So I wanted to address an issue that I had recently. I found this, I found this flyer on my driveway and it was on, it was on some other, other neighbors driveways and on their car windshields. And it said, it said every single aspect of the Jewish Talmud is satanic. And it had quotes like Yebamoth 98A, all non-Jew children are animals, and Sanhedrin 57A, when a Jew murders a non-Jew, there will be no death penalty. Stuff like Zohar 1160A, Jews must always try to deceive Christians. And, and on the back, it, it, it said, it said, every single aspect of and had pictures of rabbis. And it said, says, it asks, why are Jews allowed to?
The mayor?
It says, shut up, shut up. I have a First Amendment right. Shut up.
Through the mayor, public comments must be restricted to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. So I'd ask the speaker
In the city.
To redirect comments that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body.
I want a resolution condemning antisemitism, but also condemning things like Mitzah bepeh, which is on the eighth day as a part of the ritual circumcision.
So, Mr. Mayor, the speaker continues to speak on matters that are not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. So I'd recommend that we ask the speaker one more time to restrain his comments. And then if he cannot restrain his comments to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body, that the speaker, speakers might be turned off.
Then that's it. Yeah, move on.
Kai, it's your turn to speak. Please go ahead. Kai, can you hear me? Go ahead. Okay, moving on to the next one. Eric?
It's your turn.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is Eric Kristin. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. We are a statewide organization comprised of both union and non-union construction companies that was formed 25 years ago to oppose discriminatory project labor agreements. And before I get to those comments, might I just add that I keeping all my Jewish brothers and sisters in our thoughts and prayers today with what they're facing. And after hearing the previous speaker, they need a lot of thoughts and prayers. Sorry for that. I did want to comment on the fact, however, that the city, in its infinite wisdom in 2015, decided to placate the interest of big labor special interests by passing a project labor agreement on your city work. You are the only such city that has done so, and the results have been devastating to you. To date, your projects have come in almost $8 million higher than with the engineers estimates indicated they should be. This in an era of hyperinflation in the industry where it's already hard to keep projects on time and on budget. And you chose to eliminate the vast majority of the local construction workforce that happens to be union free. A reminder for those that weren't here for that vote, a project labor agreement forces non-union companies to use union workers. The few non-union workers they're allowed to use that work for them are forced to pay into union health welfare pension plans they'll never invest in. That's wage theft. So the local companies, the majority of whom are non-union, just simply aren't bidding your projects and the results are pretty damning. I would encourage the current city council to do their job and stand up for the interests of all citizens in your city, not just big labor special interest, and reconfigure your PLA to something that benefits you and doesn't hurt you. At the same time benefiting the workers and the contractors and the taxpayers instead of hurting them. All rights need to be respected. All workers need to be respected. And the fact is that 86% of the construction workforce. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yep, hello, this is Matthew Estepono with the Associated Builders and Contractors of Northern California. We represent building contractors in the five approved to trade trains, trades, representing all of Northern California. But we specifically, we have contractors in Monterey, Santa Cruz County, that are echoing the same concerns that Eric Kristin mentioned, the harmful impacts of project labor agreements, particularly here in your community. It's come to our attention that the project labor agreement that was implemented in 2014 has not been planned, planning out is exactly as planned. We are here to emphasize, you know, some good governance procedures to ensure that the taxpayer dollars are going to where it's spent, but most importantly, to ensure that the local contractors are able to bid on city projects, contractors that are small businesses that represent the community, that have done work with the community and just want to be able to continue to, to, to bid and to build work. So we're here, we're ready to meet and to be stakeholders at the local level. We will be reaching out to city council members and we'll be amplifying the voices of our members, especially those that live in Santa Cruz County and Monterey that do work in Watsonville. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
There's, there's one more, mayor. Lee, go ahead.
Hi, yes, hello everyone. I'd just like to speak on the issue of violent crime. So we've been facing increasing levels of, you know, like vandalism, break-ins to cars, and, you know, like larceny and stuff like that, you know? You know, for the record, I was broken into last week. And I've been having to deal with and sure, it's just a pain in the butt, okay? The only way to fix this is to put the, you know, and actually lock these people up and give them fair sentences, you know, to, you know, call out the prosecutors that are giving these young black men these short sentences when they should be getting longer sentences because hello, they broke into my car. You know, 7% of the population commits over 60% of all violent crime. That's, that's black men, young black men committing atrocious crimes like rape, violence, you know?
A little inappropriate.
Well, no, no, I'm not being inappropriate. I'm just, I'm just, this is public comment.
Yeah, you're segregating, you know, the population.
Well, no, 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 I'm not segregating. I'm, I'm just, this is FBI statistics, okay? This is First Amendment protected speech. Please don't cut me off, okay? Because we, this is First Amendment protected, okay?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so, so this is a limited public forum, and so the topics.
Okay, oh wait, you're talking on my time. Stop talking. Pause the time at least. Oh my gosh, I have more to say.
We've paused the time, so.
Thank you.
I would just say that this is a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting on these meetings. And one of those rules is that the comments must be restricted to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body. So if you could.
Okay, no, no, this is, look, let me talk about the vaccine, okay? Because there have been lots of vaccinated individuals in our county, okay? And yeah, it's causing cancer. It's causing cancer. Our people are dying due to the vaccine in our, in our county, okay? And people are dying due to young black men killing us, okay? When are we going to stand up and say that white people deserve to live?
Thank you.
Do you agree with me? Like, yeah, thank you, I guess, but oh my gosh, you guys are cutting me off way too early. Is my time still going or was I paused or like, what's going on?
Let's hit your end. Time's up. Thanks.
I'd like to ask a clarification to your clarification. If we, could you repeat what you gave them as a warning?
So this is a limited public forum, which means that the council can restrict the comments based on time, place, manner. The council can also restrict comments that are not on subject matter juris, items that are not within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body.
Okay, so if we don't control prosecutors in the county of Santa Cruz, then what he was talking about was not under our purview. Is that correct?
Well, he was talking about crimes within the city and that is within the purview.
He was supposedly talking about crimes with the city. Did he identify himself and say where he lived and when this crime happened? Do we have the right to ask him to say that before he says that these crimes happened in the city?
You can ask him, but he does not, the speaker does not have to give you.
Then maybe we need to revisit this format.
Identify where they live.
I understand it's upsetting, but you know. So we're going to go on to, and adding the.
We still have several speakers on Zoom.
Oh, we do?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, let's take a five minute break and then we'll resume. We're going to take a five minute break and we'll resume back at. Just look at my time. We'll be back at 7:00, 7:00 PM. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Welcome back again. In light of our busy schedule, I'm going to put off, as I'm allowed, to the public order communication towards the end of our meeting. So we're going to move on to things that we need to do and progress in our meeting. So we're going to go on to 9A. It's a Watsonville Academy graduation. So please, please step forward.
Mayor, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is, again, a very special night, where we are graduating our third class of our Watsonville Academy participants. Tonight, there are 11 graduates of this class. I have the certificates here, Mayor. And there are seven of them present tonight. And the participants, just as a quick overview, completed... Too loud? Okay. Completed nine weeks of engagement, learning about city departments and our operations. And I believe, in their words, they've learned quite a bit about the city, and definitely we really enjoy having members of our community learning about how the city of Watsonville runs and everyday life. So with that, I'm going to call the participants in alphabetical order. And the first participant graduating tonight is Andrea Valdez.
Come on, Andrea. In recognition of participating in the program. Thank you.
Then is Ashley Bridges.
Thank you very much.
Then we have Chris Davis.
Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Julián Manduano.
Julián.
Then we have Karina Vega. Next is Margarita Leiva Díaz. Last but not least, Vanessa Meldal.
Can we take a group picture? You know, in acknowledgement, you know, behalf of all of us, thank you for participating in the program. It's always, you know... It's always a pleasure to have community members participate in our academy, because we need... You guys are leaders in the community. You guys are, you know, our extension of what we do, and the more you learn of what it is to be in city government, the more you pass on. You're like tentacles, you know, throughout the community. So thank you. Thank you on behalf of all of us.
Last one.
You know, as I've mentioned in other meetings, I'm giving kudos and proclamations to pillars in our community. Pillars in our community are, you know, community leaders, community stewards, parents, principals, teachers, business leaders. But I've known the Leguerta family now for a few years. And they've always been a pleasure. They supported me over the years professionally, you know, and, you know, like, family. Just want to thank you on behalf of the city, but I'm going to read this out. Whereas Elaine Leguerta was born in Monterey, California, and at the age of four, her family relocated to Watsonville, California. Nice town. Where she attended local schools and through her formative years. And whereas shortly after graduating from Watsonville High School, Elaine obtained her cosmetology license and worked for two years in the profession before opening a family daycare. And whereas Elaine earned her associate's arts degrees and bachelor's of arts degree in history and master's degree in educational leadership. And whereas while attending the University of California, Santa Cruz, she worked as a file clerk in a law office as she was planning on attending law school. And however, after graduating, she worked as a substitute teacher, saved up money for tuition to law school. And whereas after having spent 12 years running a very professional, a successful professional family daycare, along with her experience as a substitute teacher, Elaine found that her true calling was in education field, as she found it very satisfying in listening to the students as they conquered a variety of issues. And whereas Elaine has proudly sent two generations of her family to PVUSD schools and to her three granddaughters who are currently employed... Granddaughters. Three daughters are currently employed within the district, as well as her husband, who has coached softball for different schools, such as Paro Middle School and Watsonville High School. And whereas Elaine has been on the school site council and governing boards of two school sites as a parent, and currently serves as the board of youth future in our business. And whereas Elaine has been a mentor and coach for new administrators and continues to strengthen our schools by providing opportunity for the youth, as those are the most important public goals for her. Now, therefore, Eduardo Montesino, the mayor of the city of Watsonville and the state of California, on behalf of the city council hereby recognizes Elaine Leguerta for her dedication and work and for being an inspiration and a mentor to many. That's a short list. I know this woman, and that's a short list. That's not... She didn't say a lot of things. But let's say, like, you know, seeing you raise your daughters, your grandkids, and, you know, my good old friend, your husband. Like I said, you're a pillar in our community, and please continue to be that way, because you're raising, you know, you're raising a wonderful family, and, you know, I'm proud of everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Ari. You got me a little talk here.
Yeah, you got it.
Thank you very much. I think it's really important for us to recognize educators, because they often don't get recognized. Thank you, Ari. Thank you, Ari, for, you know, teaching my kids. You've been a wonderful teacher. Wow, anyway. It's an honor to be in Watsonville and Paro Valley, and I hope that you all cherish the community we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
We met, oh my gosh, 30 some, 30 years ago. And Elaine was just starting off on her educational journey. And I had her daughter at Starlight, Sarah. Oh, my gosh. Who's watching? Hi, Sarah. And what excitement. 30 years of a career and a community, and being a grandma.
Our next award is for Stephen Bruce, if you can calm down, please. And I'm going to have Ari, you know, speak to us, because she, you know, she...
You want me to start? Okay, welcome, Stephen.
Thank you.
It's great to have you here. Whereas Stephen Bruce was born and raised in Aptos, California, and considers it a blessing to call Santa Cruz County his home. His education, community involvement, and investing in other lives were influenced by his parents, who were teachers, we appreciate that, and volunteers for the Paro Valley Unified School District. And after graduating from Aptos High School, Stephen's passion for physical therapy began and has worked as a physical therapy aide at Watsonville Community Hospital. And upon completing his associate's degree at Cabrillo College, he transferred to Fresno State. And shortly thereafter, graduating from Fresno State University, Stephen began working in northern Nevada and Paso Robles before returning home. And we appreciate people who return home. In 2004, to co-found Pacific Coast Therapy in Watsonville, California, along with Rick Stevenson. And at Pacific Coast Therapy grew, so did his desire to be involved with the community. And outside of work, he volunteered with the Paro Valley Little League, Watsonville Pony League, Aptos High School, and Mona Vista as both board member and coach. And Stephen is a former member of the Watsonville Rotary, and has volunteered at the annual Wine and Roses event as a Sunday school teacher at Twin Lakes, and as a student mentor at Watsonville High School Career Day dinner events. And would you like to continue?
And where Stephen has hosted and presented a continuing education course designed to help prevent common work injuries for the local dentist, hygienist, and instructed body mechanics training and preventative exercises for employees at Paro Dunes. And Stephen has continued to be an integral part of the providing outpatient physical therapy services in Watsonville, while also achieving his strength and conditioning certification in 2008, and in 2022 became a Level Two Medical Specialist with the Titleist Performance Institute. Yeah. And upon reflection of his career and life, he's eternally grateful to be on the journey with his high school sweetheart of 31 years. Congratulations. Two years, two children and his parents, and feels humbled and honored for being part of the Paro Valley, an amazing place to call home. Me, too. Now, therefore, Eduardo Montesino, mayor of the city of Watsonville and the state of California, on behalf of the city council hereby recognizes Stephen Bruce P.T. for his dedication and work and for being inspiration and mentor to many. Thank you.
And as you do that, I'm going to grab the mic again. I just want to say, because he's clearly, you know, just like Elaine, very humble about who they are and how they've helped people. Stephen, if you're ever in his, you know, near physical therapy that's happening, he helps everyone. We have athletes, we have seniors, we have people who have regular systemic issues, that they've helped people recover from surgeries, car crashes, and it's everybody. It's old, young, and people of the cultures of Watsonville, which is the diversity of Watsonville. And how much I know I appreciated when I was there and talking with everyone, how they all mesh and come together, and you guys have this wonderful attitude towards healing. And you heal our community, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. That was really sweet. Appreciate it.
Do I have to talk? I'll say something really... I guess it's on. No, I'm a small part of what the medical community does for people in Watsonville. Honored to be a part of it, along with our doctors and chiropractors and everybody in between. It's a special place, and I really believe, you know, we all have the ability to have a positive impact on each other's lives, and ours just happens to be in the medical world, and it's a blessing to be able to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, uh, nine D, I'm, uh, reporting a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session this evening. There is no reportable action.
Thank you. With that, we're gonna go out to reports to council. Ten A is reported on the draft neighborhood traffic management plan.
Better. Good evening. I'm excited. This is the first time I've gotten to sit up here and talk to you guys. And the whole presentation is going to be done by a consultant, so it's not, it won't be a presentation by me tonight, but I promise I will be back soon. I am really excited to present on this because boy, oh, boy, did I hear a lot about this when I first joined. Traffic calming neighborhood management program is very, uh, timely and it is an ever-evolving process. So I'm very happy that we have Jaime Rodriguez here. We are kind of handling this interdepartmentally from public safety, police, fire, and public works. So while Public Works is going to be giving this presentation, it absolutely represents multiple departments. So with that, I will turn it over to Jaime. Do you want to switch seats? Okay.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jaime Rodriguez. I'm the founding principal at Traffic Patterns. And before I jump into the presentation, I just want to give you a little bit of background about myself so you can understand kind of our perspective as we're helping you develop this program. So I, um, I'm a local guy. I grew up and was born and raised in Salinas. So I spent a lot of time in Watsonville because my dad was a welder in the agricultural industry. So I was always out in these areas when I was really young. So happy to be here helping you kind of develop your community moving forward. Uh, I am a civil engineer with a focus of transportation. I spent 20 years in the public sector. My last city role was with the city of Palo Alto as their chief transportation official. And I'm now the founder of Traffic Patterns. I'm also co-founder of two startup companies called Smart City Signals and SchoolRuts.org. And we serve cities all up and down California, locally here at Salinas and in Watsonville. But most of our focus is in the San Francisco Bay Area. So a lot of experience in transportation and we've developed a lot of traffic calming programs for different cities throughout the, uh, throughout the state. So today, we're gonna talk about several things, all focused around transportation. But first of all, we're gonna talk, first and foremost, about what traffic calming is. Talk about your current city practices and kind of what we hope to develop for you so you have a new blueprint for how you handle traffic calming requests moving forward. We want to talk about your current policy. Talk about kind of more importantly, how the community receives that current practice, how they perceive it and kind of how they understand it works versus what we, I think, as a city probably expected that to be when you developed it back in 2017. I think there's a little difference in what people are expecting versus what you expected back at that time. And that's caused some stress for city staff resources. We also then want to walk you through what we believe might be some good changes to the development of a brand new neighborhood traffic management program for the city. So traffic calming. I think when most people think of traffic calming, they think of the things that are shown here on this screen. Uh, so we have some really simple, cost-effective devices that are, do a really good job of trying to build self-compliance in motorists to try and kind of reduce their speeds as they're traveling down the roadway for safety of the roadway, safety of pedestrians and bicyclists. Those are really simple things like vehicle speed feedback signs. You have a static sign above that says what the speed limit of the roadway is. And then there's a dynamic sign below it that says your speed. And as you drive towards that as a motorist, you're told what your speed is to try and encourage you to reduce your speed. Those are typically pretty effective devices. It's really common to see about a three to four mile per hour reduction in speeds where those signs are installed. Very cost-effective, easy to maintain, and a really, really good device to deploy in your city. And you have a lot of those installations already locally. Speed humps, for some reason, Salinas and Monterey County and Santa Cruz County, you guys are the biggest users of speed humps for these rubber products throughout the state. I know the manufacturers, they say, oh, call Watsonville or call Salinas. They, they put more speed humps in than any other city that we know. And, and that's a good thing, but it's also a bad thing that we're gonna walk you through why that is. Uh, these cost a little bit more money and they have a long-term maintenance impact. And as, as we talk through them, you'll see you also have some other negative potential impacts specific towards emergency vehicle response to the safety of your public. And then you guys have built some pretty nice roundabouts. Those are great solutions to have to help manage safety at an intersection, but they cost a lot of money and you typically can't build them without grant resources. So you, you guys have a wide spectrum of traffic calming devices deployed throughout the city. So you can understand kind of what they are. But you've also set an expectation for your community that, hey, they're on the street, one street over, why can't I have them on my street specifically towards the speed humps? We want to help manage that process for future deployments for you. So let's talk a little bit about your existing, uh, neighborhood traffic plan. It was developed in 2017. And it really lays out right away from the get-go, the neighborhood request process to start a neighborhood traffic, a study for your community. So you're jumping straight into that, hey, if you got a concern, let, let's work with you and all your neighbors trying to figure out what the concerns are, develop a plan to implement some type of a solution in response to those concerns. That sounds great in theory, but it puts a lot of stress on your staff resources to automatically have to work with residents to establish neighborhood meetings, which is a good thing, but it isn't typically where most cities will start. A lot of cities will start kind of at a basic engineering level to make sure that there's, um, consistency with engineering best practice standards before you move into that larger community engagement process. So as a result, you know, people are expecting, like I said earlier, to be able to deploy quickly these traffic calming solutions because you have so many of them throughout the city. And then you've, you do a really good job of laying out what that process is gonna be, but that process for community engagement has a lot of staff resource impacts. You do also have a lot of nice, a nice toolkit of solutions that you can put out. Traffic, uh, traffic circles are options, speed humps are options, roundabouts are options. You know, these other kinds of signs are options, bulbouts, temporary, permanent. Those all sound great, but as a result, you have a mixture of the different types of traffic calming solutions deployed throughout your community. Those at times can start out as temporary solutions, but temporary, as we know, becomes long-term permanent because you can't build a permanent solution unless you have the resources to choose locally or unless you've gotten to raise grant funding to try and build permanent solutions. So those temporary solutions over time become ice swords and maintenance issues for you as a city. So what the city's learned as a result of your current practice is that the definition of the process that you wanted the city residents to follow through isn't matching up with what residents are expecting of city staff to be able to do. So there's a, not a clear definition on the process that residents should follow and an expectation and process for how we deploy improvements quickly versus analyze and deploy over time. That has staff resource impacts because you're automatically jumping into a larger community engagement process. For what I'm seeing, just in the last couple of months I've been helping city staff, should be really quick, short investigations and improvements with responses to residents, you know, to get things deployed quickly. So again, like I mentioned earlier, you have this great toolkit, but you end up with a lot of solutions that are temporary, long-term Band-Aid fixes that cost a lot of money to maintain that are over time ice swords for a neighborhood because you don't have the, uh, the resources to build permanent improvements. This is a quick example on this screen here of a, uh, bulbout with a median that's intended to slow traffic as they approach an intersection before they enter a traffic circle or roundabout on Clifford Street. Here's another example of, uh, speed humps that were installed, I understand, over the past year on Bridge Street. And these are wonderful. Speed humps are great tools. I've personally gone through and installed dozens of them on the cities I've worked with as an employee, as in a consultant. But we've always been very selective in when we've deployed those in the past, when I've been involved with them, because of the impacts to emergency vehicle response. It's very typical for a speed hump to raise the response time for an emergency vehicle anywhere between 10 to 15 seconds per hump. So when you're talking about life and death scenario, that is the difference between life and death in some cases. And here's, uh, this example on Bridge Street, the speed humps, the speed humps themselves look great, but you see the extra bollards that are kind of there in the bike lane path. Those slots in the, in the humps are intended to allow a fire truck to kind of traverse through them. But with the bollards there, the fire truck is treated like any vehicle. They're forced to slow down and go over the hump. So how the speed humps and design has not been consistent throughout the community in Watsonville. And the other lesson learned is that with that same situation on Bridge Street, city staff needs to do a better job in communicating with different departments, specifically engineering, with fire and police to make sure that as we're receiving requests, that we're involving them early on so that they can tell us, hey, what are the impacts if we put these speed humps in? Are there other alternative paths that you can use? Are, are we using the right types of designs to implement the speed humps? So what we've been working on over the past, I don't know, month or so, past month or so, has been a new neighborhood traffic management plan that you, I understand you don't have a copy of yet, but we have it ready in draft format. What we're presenting tonight is some of the concepts that are gonna be in there so that we can get a little bit of guidance to correct what we're developing so far before we bring it to you for official review. But what we really want to do is document and simplify the process for what are simple engineering requests versus what become minor and versus major traffic calming, uh, studies that involve more community engagement. We want to reduce the amount of field options that can be deployed to just a handful of devices that are easy for city staff to maintain, that can be built out quickly if something starts as temporary, moves into permanence. And then we also want to establish oversight because that's, that's one of the concerns that we've been hearing from a lot of residents in the community is that, hey, I, I called you at the city, no one's gotten back to me. I don't know what I'm supposed to do. You know, do I do the petition now? Do I do it later? You know, what, what's the process? And then, and because you've had a lot of staff turnover on the engineering side, there's been a slow response to that. So we want to make sure that however your, our, your staff resources, staff resources are set up in the near term, that is easy for anyone coming in you at staff level to understand what they need to do and for the community to understand what the process will be when they submit a request. Specifically, we also want to talk about the development of a traffic advisory committee and talk a little bit more about what the cross-degmental, cross-departmental collaboration in the city needs to be. So here's, here's a really quick example of something that we've already started discussions with for, at the police and fire department internally with, with engineering. Uh, the city already has existing speed humps on Arthur Road. Those are located just to the west of Green Valley Road? I think that's right. Freedom Boulevard. And, uh, those rubber speed humps need to be removed in the field today. And we want to make sure that we put back the right type of facility that doesn't impact emergency response because as we talked to the fire department, they noted, hey, those existing speed humps, you know, do cause issues. So what we're, we're, we are recommending in response to the fire department concerns at the fire department recommendations as well, is to not put speed humps that go across the entire roadway. In this specific example, this picture here, one of the new practices that's starting to develop is the use of what are called half-street speed tables. So in this case, we put a speed table just on an approach of a street on, on the one direction of travel so that a fire truck can snake down the road without having to slow down too much and just bypass the speed humps. While motorists still have to drive in their lane and go over them. There's things that you can do to keep a motorist in their lane. You could put a bollard on one side, you could put larger kind of bot dots down the center line so the motorists can't get out of their lane to bypass the speed hump itself. And we've seen a lot of success in the areas where this type of strategy has been deployed. This would have less of an impact on those emergency vehicle, vehicle responses and is a, a direct result of the collaboration between engineering and your emergency services staff. So on the traffic advisory committee that we recommended, that you'll see as a recommendation when you receive a, a longer report, we do want to have that body that provides oversight and guidance in the deployment of future traffic calming projects in the city. Uh, we felt that it would be appropriate to maybe have, uh, the option of district-wide representation or selective representation of a couple of the council members on this committee. Uh, it could be ad hoc for maybe a year as a trial. Uh, we wanted to look at the option of having some representation from the Chamber of Commerce. We, we do feel very strongly that it would be really important to have representation from the school district because Wat- Watsonville does need to build out and manage a safe access school program. And as that program is being designed and deployed, having, um, those recommendations of the safe access school program align with your traffic calming strategies is really important because that'll improve and make safer your suggested walking and biking routes for students and calm the roadways that people are driving in, in conjunction with those bikes and ped student, student-aged pedestrians. We also want to have representation for police and fire so that even though a corridor might seem like a good candidate, if it's just an arterial that's of important use for your emergency vehicle response, we want to get out front early and say, hey, we hear the concerns, but something like a speed hump's just not gonna be an option. We gotta figure out something else to respond to your concerns as a, as a community. So this, uh, body over a one-year period could potentially meet quarterly. That's the thought process so far, so maybe three or four times in the year. And over that time, you know, use data to determine if ongoing or more or less frequent meetings would be appropriate. So what we also want to do is clarify for the community how the requests are treated within the community. So we're recommending a three-tiered process in response to service requests. So when a resident calls in with a concern that they're experiencing stress or, or viewing inappropriate behavior or speeding on a roadway, then we immediately treat every request as a traffic operations improvement investigation to make sure that, hey, is the street best signed already for best practices for signage and striping? And if there's just, are just minor corrections that we can implement, develop internal work orders that can get implemented as fast as within three to six months and then conduct in a monitoring period to see, hey, is that minor improvement enough? Just that maybe just the simple installation of a 25 mile per hour sign, is that enough to satisfy the concerns of the resident that's calling in? But also create a positive behavior change for the community. If a request that comes in, maybe needs and, uh, really quick operations improvement, but also we as staff will say, hey, in addition to making these minor improvements, we think it might be appropriate to collect some additional data and treat this as more of a, a, uh, minor traffic calming improvement. We want to bring that potential concern immediately to this traffic calming advisory bodies. They know where new hotspots or concerns of community may be developing and at that time, create a minor traffic calming process where we use data. We collect data at that point. Maybe we drop tubes on the roadway to get an idea of how many motorists are traveling down the roadway and at what speeds so we could develop appropriate types of treatment that we then take back to the community. So the immediate difference here in what we're recommending so far compared to what your current program, program is, is that we're waiting to hold those larger community engagement processes that today start as step one for city staff, which stretches out the ability for staff to be able to respond to requests quickly. Here, we conduct an investigation, we develop work orders, we send them to the city public works crews or we use a contractor to build a minor improvement. And then only when we need to or after those improvements have been deployed, then we start a larger process that has data collection and community engagement and develop a budget for it and then take it back to the traffic advisory committee for them to be able to guide or say, hey, that sounds great. You know, let, let's budget and make those improvements happen. But there will be times when you really need to do a really large traffic calming project. And so at that point, we want to treat it similar to stage two where we do data collection, we hold community engagement. But we also want to put the responsibility of some of these traffic calming projects back on the people that are requesting them. And that's where the petition process comes in. What today starts as stage one really should be something that happens only on a larger project. And you want to encourage a resident or residents that are bringing forward to the city staff concerns or spot stress or experiences on the roadway. You want them to be responsible for going out, getting signatures because you want them to hear how the rest of their neighbors feel. One person may be very loud and, and passionate about wanting to see a change, but those changes can be impactful to their neighbors. And I, I've typically found maybe seven out of 10 traffic calming requests that have a petition, maybe only three move forward because as residents talk to their neighbors, they figure out, hey, I'm the only person that feels this way. Not that that's not something that we have to not respond to, but it's good for them to hear from their neighbors how the rest of the community is experiencing traffic around them, how they perceive issues. But if, assuming that we have a petition that moves forward with a strong, somewhere around, say, 50% of support from their neighbors, then we can begin a larger traffic calming project, design projects, have larger community engagement to make sure that those projects may be appropriate. And then we, when we come up with a real design that we think will work for the community, hold what's called a silent petition. And that silent petition would normally include city staff sending out a petition that residents send back to the city staff to say, hey, do you support these? that residents send back to the city staff to say, hey, do you support these improvements? And what we typically find is nine out of 10 people that supported a petition because their neighbor asked them to sign, don't want to see the changes and will, will vote no on improvements because there's the issue of, hey, I don't want to upset my friend or my neighbor, so I'm going to go ahead and sign their petition. But when we get the surveys back, we find that people don't really want to support the changes or see major change within their community. So that we, we take those kinds of scenarios back to the traffic calming advisory committee and to those residents and then we can terminate or move forward with an installation of a project. So on traffic operations improvements, again, these are really minor quick build improvements, speed limit signs, 25 messages on the roadway, maybe adding or refreshing some crosswalk striping, bicycle lanes, you know, things like that, curb warning signs. Minor traffic, or minor striping related to that could be, you know, things at the schools, edge lines, double yellow center lines down the roadway. Or it could just be simple curb management. Maybe we need to put some, some red curb in to address concerns of how people move through an intersection because they can't see each other as they're approaching the intersection. So here's a quick example of that. This is actually a real request that came in to city staff a few weeks ago. A resident on Jared Way at Airport Road was concerned about being able to move off of Jared onto Airport because they couldn't see cars coming. And sure enough, when I was there, I almost got hit trying to investigate that request. And so when we look at these requests, we do what's called a site distance analysis based off the speed limit of a roadway for Airport, which is 25. We need to make sure there's a minimum of 150 feet of clear line of sight between cars on the roadway to cars that are trying to enter the roadway. And so if you look here, there's about 20 feet or one car length of space that needs to be red curbed so cars can, motorists can see each other as they're moving through the intersection. And this is a work order that we've already submitted, so we were able to respond quickly to the request, call the resident, they were happy, the work orders are in progress. This is an improvement that should be in within the next three to four weeks, hopefully. So when we look at minor traffic calming improvements, we're, now we're looking at a few different solutions beyond the minor changes. We're looking at potentially adding more vehicle speed feedback signs. We could be looking at better intersection controls with flashing stop signs that are just flashing by time of day, so maybe during school commutes or, or work commutes, make sure people are respecting stop signs versus just having a static sign in place. We're looking at same things with at crosswalks, potentially adding like what are called rectangular rapid flashing beacons to kind of make sure that motorists are seeing those pedestrians as they're getting ready to enter the roadway. We could be looking at longer, longer modifications of the roadway, like adding bike lanes or parking edge lines or, or again, double yellow center lines, which do transform the look and feel of a neighborhood, but can do a lot to take a really wide, unpaved or untreated roadway and making it feeling, feel narrower so motorists travel at a lower rate of speed. But we don't do that type of work unless we've done data analysis and we've, you know, brought that forward to your traffic advisory committee. And data collection, just want to put it out there, can take four to six months because if a request comes in in June, we don't collect data over the summer, so we have to wait until the fall when school starts again. So let's, let's see how we would apply that type of request in real life because this is a request that just came in a couple of weeks ago. So we got a request from someone that lives near the intersection of Beck and Rogie Street that was concerned about this intersection and this portion of Rogie not feeling safe to them, that they felt cars were traveling at higher rate of speeds than they needed to be, that Beck Street was a potential kind of cut-through route for people trying to get from Lake towards Beck to Bridge to Highway 142? 52. So I'm still figuring a lot of the streets out, so be, be kind and be patient, please. But when we were out there, we saw, hey, you know, there is an existing always stop at the intersection of Beach, but there are no speed limit signs near Lake, nor near Bridge, nor near McKenzie where motorists can cut from Hushbeck to Beck to get to 152. And then we saw that there were recently installed speed humps on Beck Street that might be diverting some of that traffic from a street like Hushbeck over to McKenzie to Beck. But we also had noticed that there were no crashes in the last five years, but there was a crash about seven years ago at that same intersection. So in an immediate, short-term period, there hasn't been an issue, but historically, there's been a periodic crash to there about, within every 10 years. So the immediate operations improvements are, do, we got to, we got to sign this, we got to put up speed limit signs. We can't, we can't be mad at people if they're traveling at a higher rate of speed if we never told them that they should be traveling 25 miles per hour. So it's a simple fix, right? And, and you know, we, we called the guy, I actually called today and the guy was, oh my God, thank you, I've been asking for months for someone to do something and that makes a lot of sense. Let's start with the speed limit signs and I think people will, I think my neighbors will be happy, I'm happy. And, and, and we were able to address these concerns without starting this larger, extensive community engagement process. So we'll develop these work orders, this probably is the work order, and we'll get this built within the next three months. But this could potentially turn into something larger. If we don't see enough behavior change with the signage, we could look into collecting additional data. You know, the street is wide, so maybe we need to add a center line, whether it's a double yellow or a single yellow broken line down the street with parking edge lines. And if over time, we see that there's a recurring pattern of traffic crashes at the intersection, we could consider a third always stop somewhere near Rogie Street, which normally wouldn't qualify in its own because there's not enough side street traffic coming off of Rogie. But if you look at the spacing of the controls along Rogie, you're, you're, you're between Lake and Bridge introducing two control points could be a, a good management tool to manage traffic in the area. But we don't want to get there unless we need to, and we already know right now the resident concerns are satisfied. So major traffic calming projects are the things that you've, we talked about earlier, your, your, your speed humps, you know, we talked about potentially changing the practice towards maybe a larger speed table that are kind of half-street to have less impact to your emergency vehicle response. We don't have small traffic circles in the city, but we want to have that as an option. Those are really quick to go as temporary solutions to something like, like what's shown in the bottom right side of your picture. And we got these larger roundabouts and you do have two more round, large roundabouts coming into your city off of Valoni over the next couple of years. But again, following data collection and analysis and discussion with the traffic advisory committee. So I'll stop there and then turn it back to you for any questions and comments.
Councilmember Parker.
Thank you for coming and presenting this. It would, it would also, I'm just going to say it, be nice to have had this in our agenda notes as we have asked previously, any reports or anything? Renee?
Okay. All right, I want to put it on the record. So nine out of the 10 that were in the city of Watsonville that we saw were in my district. So we do have a lot of speed humps and, and, and part of it is we, we have a lot of seniors. We have the largest senior enclaves in, in the tri-county area. And seniors walk. And when they walk and people use it as a speed trap, you know, for themselves, they just zoom all the way down, they do donuts, they did all sorts of things. And so I, I'm not saying that any of this is bad. And I recognize that it, I didn't always agree with the traffic planning, the way it was, the way we had it, where you'd come out and do it. And I was, I always offered folks, I'd sit down with you and we'd talk it over before staff would have to go through it, you know, they'd send it out to us and then we'd email it. But part of this, okay, a couple of things. Number one, if you guys want a, a traffic advisory committee, you know, that's really cohesive, then, then city council should create that and we could have that where we appoint people who are invested in traffic concerns in each of our districts. So those are people that would really have the real talk. And I'd be totally for that. The second part of it is the police department needs to be involved and we need to be involved as well with the fact that maybe, just maybe, traffic calming isn't the only thing we need to do to stop these people who speed down Beck and Hushbeck when all there is, is residential areas with children playing and older people walking and they can't tell, they shouldn't be speeding at 40 to 60 miles an hour. So, and, and whatever we need to do by law that we can do as a council to increase awareness, but at the same time, increase the penalties for that because it's about safety. It's always been about safety. People complain about these things in neighborhoods because somebody takes a turn at 40 miles an hour off of Beck in, or McKenzie off, you know, into Hushbeck and boom, they're hitting cars that are parked along the side. And that has happened repeatedly on, on Hushbeck, over and over again. And it could have been a parent, a child, a grandparent, somebody, a dog standing right next to that and they would have been killed. And people have been injured, but I see how this as a first flow, but part of it is people live there and they know when things are happening. And I disagree with you, it may happen in all those other studies you've done, but in Watsonville, especially in my district, it happens because people live there and their neighbors want it solved. Now, do they want it solved exactly the way it has been solved? Maybe not, because maybe not all alternatives have been given to them or we didn't have those choices. And we can broaden those. So I, I, I heard that is good, but I, I'd like to get this to the community as quickly as possible when we have process because they do, they are very active. They want things solved, they want to fix it. They're not just complainers, they'll go out and knock door to door and they will bring that back to you. But if it's just one person, let me tell you, that'll, that'll fizzle immediately. But in my district, it never fizzles. And that's the problem. You know, there's a lot of speedsters and they keep on coming and, and it's just such a safety concern. So I don't know, Renee, how we could look at this, not just as, as traffic calming, but also the other part, which is increasing, I don't know if by ordinance or whatever, increasing the penalties for people who are, and supporting the police department to have traffic officers in a more broader sense.
Through, through the mayor, I think that's all part of this conversation as, I mean, we got Captain Tho here as well, who's been part of this. So I think as this develops and you look at sort of all the options and look at some of the points that have been raised today by you and others in the past, I think that also be part of the conversation. So I think if recommendation comes forward that enforcement or other things need to occur, I think those, those will come forward.
I'm recommending. That further enforcement, and I know that the police department, now what, you have two? Do you have two or one? Two? Two, to cover the whole city. So, and, and that it's tougher because the people who are speeding, and I hate to be broad about this, it's like, you know, making those comments, tend to be younger drivers because they're speeding through residential neighborhoods. And if the only way to wake them up is to give them a huge fine so somebody doesn't get killed, so we don't spend tens of thousands of dollars on, on traffic calming that we don't need to, traffic, not just traffic calming, but staff hours and everything, rather put that staff hours into having more traffic cops who will cover the city. And I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I feel very strongly that education's good, but if people blow it off and they do what they want to do within the city, then they deserve a consequence for it and before somebody gets really hurt. Thank you though, for the thought into the process and I'd be happy to appoint someone to a committee from my district that would be a, a part of that conversation.
Hold on. So, you know, first of all, you know, all, all those, all those improvements in District Seven should be in all districts. The problem that I have is, is that it's a call or somebody has to complain. We should look at it holistically of where the improvements are needed because that's not, you know, equitable. And a lot of my district, I have the same issues.
Yeah.
I have the same issues. We all have the same, we all get the call, we all get the calls, we all get, you know, next year I'm going to, I'm going to be walking to get re-elected and I'm going to get all these issues. And yes, this is a, a, a better process, but I need it simpler. I, I, I need it simpler and I need it fast. I like the, you know, the stage one, but, but we got to look at it holistically. We can't do, you know, just because someone called on, on District Seven, they're, because they're seniors, they're retired, they're going to call you 100 times. Versus in my district, you're going to get one call. So they're going to get all the improvements because 100 people called and versus.
I object to that characterization.
In District One, I, you're going to only get one call? Or I'm, or, or when I'm walking around, they're going to tell me, you know, why haven't you done this? So I'm going to call you. And then what is, what is, what does that process look like? You know, we're just in, we're just in circles, so simpler? Enforcement, I think, yes, we do need enforcement, but education also because we have a lot of young, I, I agree with you, we have a lot of, a lot of young drivers that, you know, we need to get parents that, you know, you know, jalar de las orejas, you know, because it's, because they have fast cars, they have, you know, all those Mustangs, all those, you know, are running amok everywhere, you know? You know, we've talked about, you know, my pet peeve is Green Valley. I don't even represent Green Valley no more, but you know, God, it's, Green Valley's a problem. You know, Clifford's a problem, all these temporary Band-Aids suck. They're, 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 they collect trash, it's like a trash can, you know? It like, it's no point to, there is literally no point, it's just a collection of garbage. So how can we make it better, looking at it holistically?
Mayor Protem Kiroz-Carter.
So I have a few suggestions and concerns with this proposed chart. So I have, in District Two, we have a lot of accidents. We have a lot of schools, we have a lot, a lot of speeding because we have two highways that go through my district, so I see this a lot. And we have residents who have gone and done the collection, done the community outreach, done the resident petition, and then they're told by the city, oh, well, there's nothing we can do. They tell me that what happens is the city sends someone out to collect data on a weekday when everybody is at work and there's no traffic on the streets and they say there's no problem. So I would recommend that different times a day and different days, especially the days when there's actual traffic, when there's speeding, which is, tends to be on the weekends, I would say that would be preferable to the current system of the way, however it's been done because it's not efficient. So I, yeah, that, that is something that I want to know. And then I, I take a little bit of offense to the idea that people, neighbors are just giving in to each other and then they come and they're, oh, I was just being polite. You don't think that people are rescinding what they originally said because there's people in authority telling them to do so? That, that doesn't make sense to me because in my neighborhood, we're all on the same page, we're at Lincoln and East Fifth and we've been trying to get a stop sign there for years, since Oscar Rios was in office. It's been a long, long time and that is part of the reason that I'm sitting in this seat is because we have been trying for years and years and years to make something happen. Finally, because of the dedicated efforts of the mayor and the rest of the council because we've made this a priority, we've been able to get the yellow striping on that street and that took at least 10 years. So this is really, really frustrating. I really, I commend you for wanting to have this a six-month project, but it's really frustrating to residents because they are going through the correct process and then it just gets flipped on them and then they give up and it's super, super frustrating. And it's really hard when you see kids getting hit. I've seen multiple children get hit on my street. And I just, I agree with the mayor, we, we need something tangible. I, I like the idea of an advisory committee. However, I'm concerned that that doesn't have all the voices that are needed there. And I just think that this is such, you know, it's a really complex issue. I really appreciate, again, the, the timeline, but we've been doing this thing, like we've been doing these things. So I, I do agree with Councilmember Parker that, you know, we do need to have harsher penalties. People speed because they know that they can get away with it and that's really scary. So just, just some food for thought. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark.
Thank you for the presentation. I also just want to echo that I agree with my colleagues that have spoken so far about the enforcement. You know, I, I understand where we are with the traffic enforcement and whatnot, we only have two officers right now, but you know, that'd be something to look at. Councilmember Parker said nine out of the 10 photos on this presentation were hers. Pretty much, yeah, but one of them was in my district and as Mayor Montesino called it, the trash collecting. And I totally agree and I'm very glad that this has been brought up because it has been a bane of mine. I'm glad that they are temporary. And yeah, if we can do something about that because it just aesthetically is awful and also it makes it really hard to traverse those areas. I get that it's supposed to be slowing us down, I have no problem with that, but when you have two large vehicles coming at opposite directions and you're, you know, navigating these bump outs and these little things sticking up out of the ground, you know, and people get ran off the road into the little, thank God they're flexible. You know, so thank you for acknowledging that. Good job.
Can I?
Councilmember Sazino, sorry.
I just wanted to thank the holistic look at all of this. I see Captain Tho is here, Deputy Chief Sims, I appreciate that. I do echo the concerns about the enforcement. This is the number one thing we get. This is the number-one thing we get asked about. I had no idea before I ran for office the first time how much of my life would be dedicated to this process. I did not know. I did not know how much strong feelings there were around this issue. I didn't know how many emails I was going to get, or being stopped on the street, or when I'm at the farmer's market, or anything at all. It's a process that is entirely obscure to the public. And so even this, I mean, it is a, at least we have a flow chart, but like, we have no place that I can direct a member of the public to go to say, okay, you would like this specific thing looked at, or you want this specific thing. Let's say it doesn't, it may or may not actually work for a lot of reasons, but there is no meaningful way to provide that citizen access to, hey, I would like a stop sign here. Hey, I would like, like, how do we meaningfully engage when somebody comes to us and says, I would like speed humps in this area, or I would like, you know, and they ask for all types of traffic mitigation, enforcement, those types of things. But when I've gotten the emails back, and I forward it to them, it's like the six-part process that involves like knocking on doors, and especially for, in the equity lens, right? Somebody is not going to have the resources or time to do knocking on doors to get speed humps that may be totally reasonable for that area, or a stop sign, as Councilwoman Kiroz Carter indicated, you know? But somebody who has less resources certainly may not have the time to go door to door to get what is needed. And so I would just hope for a clarity in what we can give people for access, how we can deal with responsiveness, how we can explain, well, we'll look into it versus yes versus no, and be realistic with them, and just engage in that. Like, how do we engage? Can they access something on the website? Can they, what can we do so that it's not just them feeling like they're screaming into the void? Because they ask me, and I'm like, well, let me be a traffic expert. I don't know. I don't meaningfully know the answer, you know? So like, well, there's an engineer, and, so I still stumble over it, even though I've gotten clarification multiple times. And if I'm stumbling, I know my constituents are as well. We just want that access point. It may not be yes to every speed pump that every human being has ever wanted, but maybe we can do that. And I just appreciate, I know there's only two traffic police officers. You guys are doing a wonderful job with limited resources. I would certainly hope, you know, our staffing levels at your department go up, and that this area can be, you know, focused on all areas. DUI drivers, unlicensed drivers, all, you know, every area of enforcement, because I hear them speeding on Green Valley from my house. I'm sure Councilwoman Orosco hears them as well. You can hear them going 60 miles an hour plus in the evenings. And I agree with when we're looking for that timeframe, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM is very different than after 5:00, and during that morning commute hour versus the Friday nights and the weekends, totally different scene.
3:00 AM.
And same, you know, thought for enforcement, but I'm sure your department has already considered that, and is vigorous on Friday and Saturday nights, and quite active, and I very much appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Is there pop-out in those speed pumps? Late night?
So I have a couple. Thank you. So I do agree with the equitable aspect of things. I think there's a lot of room for improvements across all districts. In my district, we do have three schools. We have streets with potholes, we have streets that lack striping, we have streets with missing sidewalks at the moment, we have missing streets with no crosswalks at the moment. And although some of the streets, you know, we have done some road improvements, the striping's still not there, and these are streets close to schools, so that's really a safety concern for me. And with rain season right around the corner, I think that should be made a priority sooner than later. I do have an issue with the six months. Yeah, even for traffic operation improvements, a six-month timeline seems to me a little long, especially when residents have been waiting for years for certain improvements. So I think if there's a way to prioritize certain projects that have been lingering for quite some time, I think we need to take a close look at that. I agree with the additional need for traffic officers for the safety concerns that everyone has brought up to this point. The whole petition aspect of things, that has been very frustrating for me. So I have a question. So I know it has to be neighborhood-driven. Can council members lead the way? Because I've been told otherwise. I've been told that I couldn't, that it had to be neighborhood-driven. But if I organize it, and I organize walkers, and we knock those doors, is that okay?
My initial, well, first of all, thank you for all the feedback, and I'm densely, definitely sensing there's been a brewing concern in your community around a lot of traffic in all your districts. And so I think this might be a really timely discussion. So, yes, nothing would prevent a council member from organizing their neighbors to submit a petition. That's completely fine. I think all that we're trying to say is that we don't want to wait for petitions to be able to do work. We want to be faster and make improvements right away. Nothing stops us from doing stage one and stage three in parallel. That's completely okay to do. And I think that when those requests come in, that's something that at the staff level, and hopefully in partnership with your traffic advisory committee, we can say, hey, we've got a request, we actually agree with the residents in this case, we think that we need to do a little bit more investigation, we want to get that data collection analysis scheduled, but we also recognize there's just some things that we need to do to make the street best practice, and get those things implemented in parallel with that process. That's what this is really trying to show, that, you know, we can respond quickly to people, and I think in the things we've just done the past few weeks, we've made residents have called in relatively happy, they know there's a process, and all things are happening, and they know there's other options for the future. So, so yes, by all means, feel free to give us a call, and we'd be happy to respond, Councilmember.
The other, going back to the access issue, you know, our finance department did an amazing job in putting together a website that breaks out the budget, like, so seamlessly. So it would be amazing if we can do something like that for residents, that they can access via our website, where they can say, I'm having this concern in my street, this is what I need, these are my concerns, and that sort of have it like, be like a tree thing that sort of navigates them through the entire process, so that that requires that concern is submitted to the right folks to be addressed sooner than later. I think that would be helpful, in my opinion. There's obviously folks that won't have access to the website or the internet, so we also have to account for that. But at least having a place that we know is going to get us, or get that resident to the correct person, or their concern to the right department, or the right category, for that matter, under this plan, I think that would be really helpful. I had one other thing. I'll come back to it.
Yeah. Councilmember Sosino.
I have a dumb question. What is the logistical point of these petitions? Like, what if somebody just calls and says, I'm interested, you know, this area I think needs XYZ? And you said, like, is it prohibited, is it cost-expensive just to send out an engineer and evaluate? Like, it doesn't need to have to be like a whole traffic study or anything, but what is, what does the petition facilitate for you, the response?
So I think it depends on the request that we screen at first call at staff level. So when we, all the times when we're talking to people, you know, and I've been doing this for 25 years, so I have a pretty good gauge when I hear a call from somebody, and they say, I'm really concerned about speeding on XYZ street. And I talk to them, they're really not concerned about the speeding on the street, they're concerned maybe just one intersection, and that's their focus, and maybe that's the crosswalk that their kid crosses to and from school. And so we want to be able to do the quick fixes, but we also need to get out there. The request that I got for Beck and Rogie was just Beck and Rogie, but I didn't look at just Beck and Rogie, I looked at the corridor of Beck. You know, I did the same thing for Hushbeck today. And so when we're out there, yes, it doesn't cost a lot to send out an engineer. I'm very reasonably priced as an engineer for Watsonville, and so we could do as much work as we need to, you know, but we want to be able to just identify the quick fix, get it done, but also be able to have a process to guide you as a city, say like, hey, there's a question that really probably is a bigger issue than what the person that called in, you know, is seeing. And so that's where stage three comes in. And so the petition process is really important, because it's the first gauge for us as city staff to figure out, are we walking into a trap here? Like, hey, is there really strong support for these changes? And if we know that there are, we can move really quick. But if we're seeing that it's really divided, that we're going to have to kind of navigate this process, we really want to make sure that we get the right data collection, that we're analyzing and developing the right recommendation, and actually using the residents to help build consensus and support for projects, because we don't want to put, at the end of the day, the council in a position where they're kind of fighting and making a decision on a 50-50 split community. We want to build as much community consensus and support, so we're bringing something to you to vote on for an implementation, or to direct staff to go and design plans and get grants to build, that it's really supported, and you can easily vote it, because your constituents support it. That's what this is really trying to show.
Yeah. You know, I just remember talking to someone and saying, you know, I went through a process, but we only have like seven homes in this neighborhood, and they need eight signatures. I know, true it is, but like I said, it makes no sense.
Agreed. So I have just a few comments that kind of address the general, you know, thoughts that I'm hearing, and I love it, because it all points to, this is an evolving issue. There's not a one, you know, stop, cookie cutter fix, because if there was, this wouldn't be an issue. So I do appreciate all of these comments, and I think that we're going in the right direction, but as we get more feedback and engagement from our residents, we'll continue to evolve this process. The other is touching back on the interdepartmental, that there is a role for more than just public works, and understanding that there, it's multifaceted, the way that we, you know, look at this. There is enforcement involved, there's engineering involved, there's, you know, engagement involved, so it is a complex issue. And then going back to the idea of the advisory committee, what I like about that is the equitable voice that it gives. It's no longer just the platform for the sole person that makes the most calls, or comes to all the city council meetings to make all those requests. It becomes an equitable, there's an equal playing field for voices, especially if we have equal district representation. And then it also allows us to look at systemic things. So going back to your last comment, where it's like, well, why can't we do these things? Because we didn't really have like a thorough process in place, so we'd solve this issue, and then go over here, and then go over here, and there was never anything looking at like the systemic route, right? So why is this happening in seven, District Seven, and not four? Or maybe it is, did we look at the solution for that, right? So people are probably speeding across districts. So what I like about the idea of the, you know, the advisory committee, is that it's going to give us some, you know, systemic root issues that we can address citywide, rather than just district by district, or complaint by complaint. So that just kind of peppers across all of the questions, doesn't address any one specifically, if there's any more.
Councilmember Clark.
I think this is more directed towards our city manager. Not in any bad way, but, no, the two-pronged approach we were talking about, because you don't have any, I mean, you can talk and discuss with the police department, but that's not your purview. Whatever monies it takes to make sure that we, and whatever we do, and we need to do to put enforcement, and you can talk about education, but I think enforcement, and then give an alternative to paying a fine with education, but it's getting people in the door to say and understand, they all have driver's license, or they don't, right? And that's something else. But we need to put money towards that, and we also need to charge towards that. And I feel very strongly about it, because this is a safety issue across every district. And your point was well-made, Mayor, and Mayor Protem. It's across every district, and there are children and families and elderly people everywhere, and we need to protect that by allowing the people who do it right, which is our traffic cops, to be out there, and to be vigilant, and then people will start paying attention, and they'll slow it down, they won't know about it, and then, you've got to pay a $1,000 fine for something? You pay attention when you don't have a lot of money, and you maybe saved a life because of it, and that's a priceless thing. So whatever we need to do to create that two-pronged approach, you know, that, plus enforcement and education.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to our continued discussion.
They didn't tell you we were like that, did they? Only about this particular subject.
10B, update on the health and all policy implementation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is a request that was presented, requested by Councilmember Orosco a few months ago, several months ago. And it has to do with health and all policies, and the city did adopt the resolution a few years ago, back in '20. So as I was looking and talking to our partners and stuff, a couple of opportunities are presenting themselves, I think, to really integrate this into our way of life moving forward. I think one of them is the general plan work, and some of the things that it contains, I did provide you an introduction to Health and All Policies Guide for State and Local Governments, which is a kind of a good summary of what this is. So in the general plan, clearly there's promote health, equity, sustainability, intersector collaboration, benefit multiple partners, engage stakeholders, and that's today, earlier today, you approved an MOU with the CBOs and NGOs and stuff on the collective impact, which is one of the primary focuses of that is health and wellness. So I think from a health and all policies, what I'm recommending, suggesting, is that yes, it's not happening tonight, and might have taken a while, but we're engaged in these two planning efforts, and these two more intentional engagement efforts with multiple partners, that will help us sort of put this in place and develop it. So what I am suggesting, recommending, that that come back as part of those two efforts, and they'd be front and center. There's a lot of things already being invested in that, and so I don't want to do some, I'm not recommending that we do just another effort, that's maybe then we're trying to align it with two things that are starting. One, the collective impact in the MOU is just starting, and the general plan work is in the process of, you know, our community development director gave an update a few meetings ago, and we're now getting into the real heart of it. So I would suggest a little more patient, and let that develop through those two efforts.
So, but eventually, we'll come back as an ordinance.
If that's where we end up. So the general plan will be codified, and efforts that come out of the collective impact might end up as an ordinance, or other things like that. So the answer to that is, it will come back in an honest form at some point. But I think it needs to fit those two efforts.
Correct. And so that's where the conversation has begun, with the current MOU in place, the our community partners.
Yes.
Okay.
And implementation in the general.
And then the implementation of the general plan.
Because a lot of the health and all policy touch a lot of the things that the general plan is actually focusing on.
Correct.
Already. So that's my recommendation.
I'm okay with that, and as long as it comes back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I have nothing else.
Well, any other comments? Now we're going to go on to 10C, update on the workforce housing development and partnerships.
So this one's a little bit more exciting, in that, based on direction from the council, we did convene, our Director Marion was part of an initial conversation with the county, PVUSD, to discuss opportunities to work on workforce development and housing. Both Gabriel and University of California, Santa Cruz, are also have signed on to participate in a working group on how we can develop workforce housing opportunities. What's going on today is the county is doing a study of their properties throughout the county, and not only in Watsonville, but in other areas, about workforce opportunities. So there's, the study's being done, it's going to be presented to the working group, and we're going to discuss sort of next steps on how can we develop more of these opportunities. The reality of The reality of this effort is there's just not a lot of funding available for workforce development. If you recall, when I think Eden Housing was here several meetings ago presenting sort of an update on their project and Councilmember Deeter asked, well, how do we make a guarantee, how do we guarantee it for Watsonville? Is, well, we have to pay. It has to be our funding sources, right? Then we can set up our rules. So part of the effort and part of the discussion with the partners is how do we develop something that incentivizes workforce development and how do we manage it? So I'm reporting that based on the direction, there is a working group that we stand up that will start work, that's looking at this. The county is going to be, has taken on the initial work of doing a study of how we can develop some workforce projects. So that'll come to the group and I hope to be able to report back to the council in early 2024 on the results of that study. So that's where we're at. So all the different agency partners are on board. We're all struggling with hiring. We're all struggling with, there is not, there's not available housing of it, there's not a housing available for a lot of our workforce. And so how do we do better in that area? So I don't know if, I'm just giving you an update on where we're at.
Thank you. So this is an item that I did brought forward, so I'm glad the conversation started. I'm glad that you reached out to UC Santa Cruz. They do have like an onsite staff workforce development. So I think that's an excellent model to at least look at, just because it does lead to ownership eventually.
Yes.
And I know, I mean, what was it? I think they shared data with us, right? Where about 364 employees are from the city of Watsonville. So I'm glad they're on board with the conversation. I'm just excited to see what the study shows.
And, and they are obviously partnering with Cabrillo and developing some project in the, on their main campus. So I think there's an opportunity here as well.
Thank you.
So that's all, just updating you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, around again, 10D, city manager's annual update report.
So I've, I've given you some, some updates. We're, we're winding down to the end of the year. So part of what I'm going to recommend and frankly, I think is a good opportunity to say anything to talk about it right now, is I think we're going to go look at our use of Zoom meeting in the future. And what I like to recommend is we have two more meetings left in the year, regularly scheduled meetings. So I want to bring back a robust conversation to the council with protocols and everything to see whether we do this or not, starting in 2024. And there's no, there's, so I would schedule it for someone, 2024, first meeting 2024 to have this conversation. We have our next, our two, next two meetings are traditionally like meetings with November and December. That's been our traditional for the last several years. So that's what, I wasn't thinking of reporting on that, but in thinking about what we encountered for our next meeting, I'd just like to, there is no legal requirement to have Zoom. And I'd like to bring, I would like to bring back, allow us, we work with the city attorney, develop a protocols, have a robust conversation about what we do in the future. So.
Councilmember Salcedo.
I appreciate city manager's insight. We're not saying no to Zoom for the rest of our time here by any means, but I think we do need some protocols developed, some guidelines, some very specific information on how we can manage Zoom. So what happened earlier can never happen again. We should not be used as a platform for hate speech. I know we all condemn it. I think we can do better and we will. And I really appreciate that brief pause in our use of Zoom so we can think about this more holistically. So I, I don't know if the, if city manager needs to vote or anything, but thank you.
No. Anything else? All right, well, thank you. And seeing no questions, we're going to move on to new business 11, 11A's consideration rescinding ordinance of cruising.
Red.
There we go.
There we go. Mayor, council, members of the public. My name is Tom Sims, I'm the Assistant Chief of Police. I do not have a presentation for us. I think we had a good, robust discussion at the meeting on September 26th, where we talked about options with regards to the cruising ordinance. And you made it very clear that you wanted an ordinance, an ordinance rescinding the cruising ordinance. And that's what we have in front of you today. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Ready to make a motion.
I was just going to get public info for the community. I think we have no questions. Anybody from the public that weigh in this item at the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just say a few words, if that's acceptable. So just a reminder that this is a limited public forum and that means that the council has rules relating to how public comment is given. And in this situation, these are agendized items. So comments must relate to this specific item that's on the agenda. If the comments do not relate to the specific item, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I will assist in identifying those commenters so that, and remind them that they need to bring that, their comments back to the topic at hand. And if they do not, then I will work with you to instruct the clerk to turn off the microphone.
Okay, that sounds great. With that, anybody in the council chambers like to weigh in the, side in the agenda? Seeing no, nobody jumping up, I'll bring it back. Do we have anybody in Zoom? Seeing nobody in Zoom, well, direction from council.
I'd like to. I'll second.
Rescind the ordinance of cruising.
So this is a motion and I'll, I'll read it because the, the title needs to be read. It's an ordinance, motion to introduce by first reading by title only waiving the full reading of the text and ordinance rescinding Article 17 Cruising of Chapter Five Traffic Within Title Four Public Safety of the Watsonville Municipal Code.
That.
That.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
First and second. Now we get a roll call.
Yes, sir. Clark?
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Quidos Carter?
Aye.
Salcedo?
Aye.
And Montesino?
Yai.
The motion carries.
All right. Now 11B, airport master plan. Staff report by Director Williams.
Meanwhile, say, congratulations. I didn't get to congratulate you last time, but congratulations on your award.
Oh, yes. Nobody cares about that.
We do, Rayvon, but thank you.
So yeah, I'm, I'm just reflecting because before, before we get into this, six years ago, and I'm, and I'm serious, six years ago, we had just completed a period of time at the airport in which we were trying to determine how to move forward relative to process procedures, capabilities, trying to make it safe. In that three-year period, we really just did basic blocking and tackling, saving up funds. And then in 2017 to 2019, we applied for grants with over, multimillion dollars, over $2.5 million. And we refurbished each runway, each taxiway, new striping, new marking, new lighting. We even worked with the FAA to defend Salinas' VOR. We brought satellite-based technology to the field with the help of pilots, but also working with the FAA. And at the end of that time, November of 2019, sitting in my office with all the staff together, they said, now what? And I said to them, we have to move from pick and shovel to T-square and a drafting pencil because we don't have a plan for the future. So what we did is that, that December, we put an application in for update the master plan. And we were told by people we really trust and believe that it was probably very unlikely that we were going to get a half a million dollars to do a master plan. And we'd be real lucky. And my response was, the harder I work, the luckier I get. So what we're going to do is we're going to work hard and over the next six months, we put all stops to the wall. We put a plan together, we petitioned Caltrans, we petitioned the FAA. We even got Jimmy Panetta to write a letter. And lo and behold, out of the clear blue sky in August of 2020, we got half a million, $550,000 for the plan that we're bringing to you tonight. And I must say that we thought we could do it in 18 to 24 months, but it turned out to be three years because it became very apparent that we could do all this work, bring this plan before you and you could accept it. But in order for you to adopt it, we had to clear some environmental hurdles. And the environmental hurdle was not funded by the FAA. So they were going to give us $500,000 for the plan, but they weren't going to give us $120,000 for the environmental. So we had to reach in our pockets and we had to come up with those funds out of the enterprise fund. But it was worth it because what we're about to bring to you tonight is the combination of, the culmination of all that effort. So joining me is Erin Shealan. She is the aviation planner for Kimley Horn. Kimley Horn is one of two consultants the airport has. We basically live in two worlds. We live in planning and environmental, that's Erin's job, and then we live in an architectural engineering. They help us plan and look at the environmental components and we have another consultant that helps us design and build it. We did a lot of work with the other consultant in the early days. And now for the last three years, Erin is very, been very gracious for my millions of phone calls at all times of the day and into the night and texts and emails. But she's been a very good partner and I don't think we could have done it without her and Kimley Horn. So without further ado, we're going to be a tag team. What we're going to do is take you through the presentation. I'd like you to take notes, you can look at the numbers of slides and then at the end you can ask questions. If you feel that, wait, 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 stop, I don't understand that, you can certainly interrupt me. I serve at the pleasure of the city manager and the city council. So if you want me to shut up, I will, right? And we'll, and we'll, and we'll go through this. One thing I will note, as we, at the airport, things happen. I, I tell the team, we're very good at coming up with ideas, but sometimes, you know, even our best days don't end up well. Even tonight, I'm, I'm fortunate to work at a place where I'm judged by the content of my character, right, and my professionalism, not what someone else is thinking about me. And at the airport, I get a lot of that. But we still keep our head down and we still do the job. With that said, we worked on all of this and the FAA threw us a curb right before I came to see you. And that curveball, we, we are going to make lemonade out of lemons. And I think at the end, you will be very pleased with how we've tried to come up with, with some suggestions. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to pull any punches. I realize the elephant in the room is the, not the closing or decommissioning, the appropriate name is deactivation.
There you go.
So deactivation of, deactivation of the airport. I'm not, I'm not hiding from that. When I, when we spoke with Erin, I said to her, that is an alternative that we will investigate because as an agent of the city and as an individual that believes in process, if we're going to put a plan together, we must look at every reasonable alternative, even if we don't think it's reasonable. We, that's, that's why it's called a plan. And we know what Mike Tyson says, all plans work until you get hit in the mouth. And so we decided that, that's what we were going to do. We were going to look at every particular plan we could. And that's what we've tried to do with this. So I'll go ahead and start the pitch here. I've already introduced Erin. I'm going to get the, okay, cool. So the agenda is broken down into two pieces. As I noted, my original plan was just the first four, the previous plan, talk about the background of the plan, the master plan analysis and the recommended development plan. However, based on some things you'll see as we go through it, there's some other options that I want you to consider tonight. And I want also to iterate, to focus on the following. I'd like to reiterate that we do believe that there's a strong working relationship between the airport master plan and the city's general plan. It's extremely important that you guys understand that we did not create the master plan in a silo on an island. We brought in Justin Meek in, as from CDD into the planning process back in August of 2020. So we have been very close with Suzie and Justin as we've gone through this because it's very, it was important for me to have my plan, our plan, done before their plan was done. So they could use elements of that. I'm going to turn it over to Erin now and she's going to take you through the next couple of slides, which kind of sets the background of what we did and how we worked.
Thank you, Rayvon. Glad to be here this evening. This has been a, a great project to be working on for the last three years and working with Rayvon at the airport. It's, I will say, it's great seeing a staff and an airport manager that's so passionate about the airport and wanting to do what's best for it. That's not something you see everywhere, especially at General Aviation Airport. So it's been, it's been great for us. So as Rayvon's saying, the last 20 years of airport planning efforts. So the last airport master plan update was in 2003, about 20 years ago. And a lot of things have changed on the guidance and the design standards of the FAA since then. And so periodic updates have been done to the airport layout plan. It's kind of a smaller version of a master plan. That was done every couple, five years or so, 2008, 2013. And then from 2014 to 2020, as Rayvon was saying, there was a lot of projects that were done to go ahead and take care of some, possibly some deferred maintenance and some other improvements that were needed. And so that resulted in minor updates very specific to those individual projects. And then in 2018, through some other work, the FAA identified that the runway visibility zone, the RVZ, you might have been heard it call, was an issue, that the airport wasn't meeting the standards. And that's basically, you have two intersecting runways and how well can you see from one end to the other between those two runways? So as part of that, Rayvon submitted what we call a modification to standard, which is basically to operate the airport as is, with some minor adjustments without having to do some major infrastructure change. And the FAA denied that. And so he's saying, going back into 2019, you know, what do we need to do? What's next? What's next for this airport? How do we resolve some of these issues, which led into us completing the, and kicking off the master plan in 2020? And so some key milestones and I'll walk through what is the process. But in January 2022, we received approval from the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, for the activity forecasts. In June of 2022, later that year, we were able to finalize the draft recommended development plan based on all the work that had been completed to date. And then about a year later, we received approval from the FAA for that recommended development plan as depicted on the airport layout plan, that ALP. And once we submitted the ALP drawing set to the FAA, we then started the SEQA analysis to update the SEQA document based on that plan, which was finished last month, which led us to be able to come to city council in October of this year. So looking at an airport like Watsonville, it's, it's what we call a federally obligated airport. It means that it is received FAA funding and it must adhere to the grant assurances. So what does that mean for a master plan process? First, it means that the FAA has to approve those activity forecasts. What are the operations? What kind of aircraft are completing those operations? And how many based aircraft and what type of based aircraft are sitting as tenants at the airport? They look at the five and 10-year out of the 20-year planning horizon and actually approve those. And they compare it against their own forecast as well to make, kind of do that gut check to make sure that it's realistic. And then they signed the airport layout plan, the ALP. It's a single drawing within the drawing set, but they actually review it through multiple lines of business in their departments to make sure that it meets all of their standards, works within the region, works within the national system, and actually stamp that. And that's something that in order to receive funding, the projects must adhere to the design standards and show up on the ALP. If it's not on the ALP, they're not going to fund it through their programs. So those are two items that we were required to update as part of the master plan. So what is the purpose of a master plan? It's the long-term guidance for the airport, the development strategy over the next 20 years. It's a document that actually belongs to the city, but in order to receive that funding, it has to follow the FAA guidance and regulations of what's shown on that plan. And as I mentioned, it's what the FAA, as they're reviewing it and looking at the analysis behind it, it's how they justify those projects when they want to go ahead and fund it. Because we have local offices that work within the FAA, but they have to justify those projects back to the FAA headquarters to receive the funding. because we have local offices that work within the FAA, but they have to justify those projects back to the FAA headquarters to receive the funding. So this is how they, if it's on the ALP, it means they've reviewed it and it's been justified. But periodically, you need to go back and redefine and reanalyze the assumptions, make sure that you're working off the most current design standards, the most current activity at the airport, those kinds of things. So when we really look at this master plan, it's, it was a snapshot of the operations at that time and what was the activity and kind of looked at some assumptions about what would be happening in the near term over those twenty years. And it's focused on the airport itself, you might be familiar with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, that is a separate document that is more focused on outside of the airport boundaries. And something that we really kept in mind as part of this plan is that this is not the final solution, this is not the baked plan for the next twenty years. There were, there may be changes, there may be difference in the types of aircraft that operate at Watsonville, there might be a new tenant that brings in a different kind of business and the FAA regulations might change, so it's something that, you know, flexibility was put into that plan. And something that's important to remember is that this plan did not address the business operations or the marketing of the airport itself. So throughout the process, public input was very important, it's something that the FAA requires as part of a master plan and you have the ability to kind of determine based on your airport and your community and your municipal code and what you want to do for the master plan. And Rayvon was very clear from the outset that we want to do everything that is recommended. So that started first by establishing a project review committee, the PRC, and the members, you can see in the upper right, two of those were tenants of the airfield, the Experimental Aircraft Association and the ninety-nines, that's the female pilot organization. There was a resident near the airport as well as Rayvon mentioned, Justin Meek, a city planner. So we met with them four different times at key milestones upon the project. Once we did an initial inventory of the airport, make sure that we captured everything, got all the right insight from those stakeholders. Again, once we had some more analysis done, those forecasts later on, once we had developed some alternatives and then when we had kind of come up with some, the recommended development plan. And then we also had three public workshops, that first one about a year into the project, once we had the initial analysis, figured out what were the, some of the deficiencies at the airport, understood some of the desires, had a public meeting, we had a great turnout of fifty to sixty people. We did an open house style and so had a presentation to let them understand what the project was about and then get their feedback, make sure that there was nothing that we were missing, nothing that we didn't know about as the project team, were there other desires that didn't come out of necessarily exactly what the FAA design standards say you should have? And then we had another meeting later in the year, once the, we had started the initial set of alternatives to get some initial feedback. And then again in December, two thousand and twenty-two, before we submitted the airport layout plan drawing set to the FAA, we held a final town hall where the documents were available for people to look through, ask any final questions that they might have. And then the airport has, the airport advisory committee, we presented a couple of times as part of the project and then Rayvon also kept them updated through the quarterly meetings about what was happening with the project. And then today, obviously, we have the city council meeting open to the public. So I want to walk through what is the analysis of a master plan look like? So you can see this chart here, it's kind of, if you think, a sequential timeline and the different components that take place. So in that upper left box, the existing conditions, so we look at what is the inventory of the airport, what is existing there today? And then we did an aerial survey, which gives us GIS, three D GIS data as a base map and some aerial photography of the airport, so we get a very clear picture. And that information is actually uploaded to the FAA so they can look at it in the national system. We did the aviation forecast, those activity forecasts that were approved by the FAA. And then we kind of look at those two together, what's there, what might you need in the future based on those forecasts? What are the design standards and do that facility requirements, what are some of the deficiencies, what are additional desires and what are some opportunities from the airport? And then from that information, we then go into the alternatives analysis, looking at what are the deficiencies, what are the desires? How can we meet those demands and those requirements, what are the different alternatives? Evaluate them and then pull them together into recommended concepts. And throughout this whole process, we were looking at the environmental considerations of the airport. What is there, how might these alternatives impact the environment? And then once we came up with that recommended concept, we look at the financial feasibility of implementing the project, looked at the cost, the phasing, the environmental requirements and put together an implementation plan and that's what the airport uses for their airport capital improvement plan, the ACP, to develop that for the next five, ten and twenty years. And then we pull all that together into the airport layout plan and a full master plan report and submit that report and the ALP to the FAA for their review and approval. And throughout that, you can see in that red box, the public involvement that I reached through and then the FAA was along with the project for every step of the way as well. So that way, once we submitted the ALP, that they knew the analysis behind it to expedite their review. So just a quick snapshot of the forecast, you can see based on the data that was available in two thousand and twenty, there was about five thousand, fifty thousand, five hundred operations and two hundred and eighty aircraft that are based at the airfield that are tenants of the airport. And through the twenty years, based on a reasonable forecast, we estimated there being about ninety thousand operations by two thousand and forty and three hundred and twenty-seven based aircraft. And then for each runway, it's also important, the design standards are based on the type of aircraft that are operating on that runway. What we call the critical aircraft and there are specific requirements into what makes them that critical aircraft. But so for the primary runway, the runway two twenty, it's designated as a B two, which is an FAA designation and that's a representative aircraft, the Beech King Air three fifty. Now the Crosswind Runway nine two seven designated B one small, smaller aircraft and the Cessna three forty, forty was used for that. So a little more about the alternatives analysis, and so like I said, we're looking at what are potential solutions for the needs of the airport, whether it's a desire or it's actually a requirement based on those design standards. And then we evaluate them and you can see some of the criteria that we use, does it satisfy that forecasted demand? Does it meet design standards, so some pretty basic alternatives? And then how does this alternative fit in with the rest of the airport, if we do something over here, is it going to impact other infrastructure? And then looked at the cost that it would take to implement the project and the flexibility. Can we adapt this based on changing market conditions, changes of interpretation of FAA guidance, changes on the regulations? And then obviously the environmental considerations. And so we did apply to value, different evaluation criteria to different topics, came up for each topic a preferred alternative and then looked at it, put all those puzzle pieces together and looked at how they interacted and came up with a single recommended development plan. And as part of that, like Rayvon said earlier, it was always in our mind that we need to do our due diligence and look at all the alternatives, not just the top three alternatives, but really do a deep dive into everything, even if it was unpopular for the community around the airport or the pilots themselves. We thought that we owed the airport the due diligence factor of that. So here's a list of topics analyzed, I'm not going to go through each one of them, but you know, we did look at what if we close a runway or or the whole airport, what does that mean? All the different airfield components, the configurations, the safety areas, looking at the lengths of the runways, the navigational aids, the instrument approaches for the airplanes coming in and out and a lot of those support facilities, security, wash racks and utilities, those kind of items. And so I mentioned, something that was really important for us, especially when you have an airport that has those two intersecting runways and most of their development on one side of the airfield. When you make a design choice here, so you can get this benefit, meet that design standard, we really had to look at what does it mean for everything else in the airfield? If you meet this design standard, does it push out this facility, does it push out this fence line? And then does that have a ripple effect down the way and cause a detriment somewhere else? So that was something we always kept at the forefront of our mind. So I'll turn it over to Rayvon to talk about what was the resulting development plan.
So this morning I was on a call and at the end of the call, the, one of the individuals says, every time I'm, you know, talking on the airport, I learned something. But but in learning something, I can make an informed decision. So as I go through this, you know, whether it's the water center and public works or fire or PD or parks, all of the department heads have the nuances of their individual organizations. And sometimes it's easy to pretty much understand it, right, water's water, you go down a slide. The airport is a little bit different and so I ask you this, if there's, if I'm talking too fast or you don't get it, just stop me. Because it's very important that we relay the information so you can make an informed decision. I'm not trying to change anyone's mind, I'm just trying to present information so you can make an informed decision relative to this piece of critical infrastructure. So what I'm getting ready to show you now is if Rayvon Williams had his way, this is what it would look like. And I want to say that upfront because as your designated agent to to manage this critical resource for the city where Joe Biden comes into, where people fly over levees, where Loma Prieta happens, where fourth grade kids come up for their field trips, where the open house occurs, you want a place that's kind of working right and people kind of know what they're doing, at least most of the time. So with that said, I'm not, the, these bullets, we call them balloons, they, we went through every one of these. And and what what should be noted is that in this recommended development plan, it goes from, for lack of a better word, from the sublime to the ridiculous. It's like, everything works, we're going to do everything, right? We may not be able to afford it, but in a perfect world, if we were going to look at these things, these are the things that we could do to ensure that this critical infrastructure continues. So it's a lot of fancy colors, you'll see things going around, but what we did is, is we break it down into pieces. So what many people, even pilots on the field, I I, they just don't, just because you can fly an airplane, doesn't mean you can run an airport. And that's a battle I fight every day. It literally is a battle I fight every day, right? Because it's easy to fly a desk, it's hard to fly an airplane. But the advantage I have is I do fly an airplane and I am a tenant and I kind of understand. But when it comes to the airport, one of the challenges that we have is trying to make sure that you understand the following. The FAA only requires that you as a sponsor provide a landing facility. You're not required to sell fuel, you're not required to have a restaurant, you're not required to have hangars, you're not required to have commercial spaces, you're not required to have fourth grade field trips, you're not required to have an open house, you just have to have a field that meets design criteria so planes can land. In order for that airport to survive, it has to sell fuel, rent hangars, have leases, be a part of the community. We can't make it on our own and as one of my favorite finance people said, you're not getting a dime from the general fund. So we have to make it on our own and we strive to do that and we run the airport as if it was a five million dollar business with ten people, mom and pop. So when we sit down and look at this plan, we have to be real serious because it's, for lack of a better word, our money. It's our money, it's the money that comes from the users and they make it very clear to me that it's their money and they're putting that money into it and we try to put that money back into the field. So when we got ready to do this plan, we said, what's important, well, runways are important, well, what else is important, taxiways are important, well, what else was important? I continually try to stuff ten pounds of aviation activity into a five pound bag. Because if we bring kids fly free, if we bring parachute landing to the field, if we have charter operations, if we do the types of things that are aeronautical activity approved by the FAA, then we're going to thrive and it's going to be a value add to the city. In two thousand and nineteen, we did an economic impact study that showed that the airport brought sixty-seven million dollars to the city's economy. Four hundred and fifty-two jobs, payrolls that are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it ain't chicken feed out there, there are actual lives that are being impacted and the lives of the people that work there and thrive there and have ongoing businesses, they're impacted. And those people go to stores in Watsonville and they buy stuff and they pay taxes. There's no saying if you want to make a million dollars in aviation, you start with two million, because that's how difficult it is. So the people out there on the field, they do struggle, just like anyone else in a world that is constantly changing, high technology and requires a skill set. So what I want to make sure that you understand is as we go through this, we had to look at airspace, general aviation activities, security and support facilities. So we look at all of this stuff, we add it all together and that's what each of those balloons are. So without boring you with with any more of that, it costs money. Here's the money that we have here, this is what we're laying out over a twenty-year period. Money, you'll see the preponderance of these dollars come from state and the federal government, we have to come up with the airport share over the next twenty years and that number is imminently doable. So here is the challenge that I bring before you tonight. In a perfect world, the presentation would have ended right there and I would have asked you to adopt the 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 master plan. But when we received the adoption from the master plan from the FAA, what they call a determination, they threw us a curve ball, they said, Rayvon, we like your master plan, we like your layout plan, but we're not going to fund the Crosswind Runway. By not crow, funding the Crosswind Runway going in the future, that opens up some challenges and some opportunities. So the determination by the FAA that they weren't going to fund it, even though we had put it in our finances and it's critical to this runway visibility zone issue, they were going to pay to help us fix an issue that they identified. Then they say, we don't have the money and you still have the issue. That's a problem. So I have to go to Renee and go to Susie and say, listen, let's just play it out. There, it's a high likelihood that I'm not going to be able to fund this and we're going to have to take some action because our plan was to shorten that runway initially with them paying for it, which would do a number of things. On the one hand, it would absolve the safety issue, on the other hand, it would move the safety zones, which from a CDD perspective is a good thing. So now we had to realize, well, wait a minute, there are other options that come from this and these are the options that I'm bringing before you. The challenges that we have in this as we go forward are, one, since they didn't fund it and we don't have this runway visibility zone issue, how do we address that safety issue? Shortening the runway will address that safety issue, right? The city could choose to go ahead and fund my request, but there's even a better option that you'll look, that you'll see as we go through this. The opportunities are, the city could choose to maintain it and keep that Crosswind Runway, but they could also shorten it and still have a Crosswind Runway. So what we decided to do in in working with Susie and Renee is to try to come up with a balance between the words that I've mentioned to you before, threshold relocation and safety compatibility zones. So just think of these two things, threshold relocation and safety compatibility zones. So what in the hell is a threshold relocation, what what does that mean? Just look at it like this, the runway has an effective end, it's either a physical end or virtual end. And you can see that you gotta, if you have to go over trees, think, Junavista, right, Manthew Road, right? You can't land, we can't use that entire runway because we need a slope to get over those trees and to get over those power lines as was evident July first of this, January first of this year, we got to get over there. So, but we can have, you can have as the sponsor, by directing the airport, to shrink that, especially if the FAA isn't funding it anymore. And that's, that's the option that you have before you. Well, what does that, what does that do? I'm going the wrong way, okay, what does that do, what's the impact on safety compatibility zones? Kind of a big, busy slide, but I'll shrink it down for you. Up the upper right-hand, left-hand corner, it talks about the relocation of the threshold, what we just looked at. If you look at that, that picture there, look at A, B and C. A is the red safety zone one, you can't do anything in that safety zone because in studies of accidents, the distribution of where they land is in the red. B is the end of runway two seven, the Crosswind Runway. C is where you could move the end of B. If you move the end of B, A, two and three and four, they all shift also. They all shift, the the safety compatibility zone and all the restrictions that go with it, all the liabilities, all the prohibited, limited, caution, they all move. And it, the reality is, is noting and hiding it, it opens up for infill development, it opens up tons of opportunities that heretofore did not exist. So what are the options before you guys tonight? One, you can relocate the threshold across the threshold at my original request of eight hundred and seventy feet. Or you can relocate it by fifteen hundred and ninety feet. Or you could say, close the whole runway. Or you could say deactivate the entire airport, tho- those are the options that are before you. So what we did is, is we looked at each of these options and we tried to do a pro and con. Option one, if you go with what the airport would recommend, which is maintain the Crosswind Runway, shorten it by basically eight hundred and seventy feet, we still have a Crosswind Runway of thirty-one hundred feet. It meets the critical aircraft requirements that Erin talked about, it shifts the safety zones to the west. The cons is the FAA is not going to fund that, so I got to pay for it. Or you got to pay for it, someone's got to pay for it, it's five hundred thousand dollars and we know you're not going to pay for it, so I've got to come up with that to make that happen. But then you would have to approve that. It requires an environmental approval because you see where that two seven is with the with the taxiway going through it? It's going right through my favorite plant, Holocopper Macadamia Tar Plant. In order to go to Tar Plant, I've got to go to the state, I got to get a take permit, I've got to go through environmental approvals, I got to find a home for those twenty-five hundred plants, even though we have nine hundred thousand on the field and it's going to take three years to make that happen. Although this option was included, it's it's a challenging option. What happens is the safety zones move though, if you look at this picture here, you'll see safety zone four in the building over to the right, I think that's Kmart. If you go back to here, you'll see how safety zone four is over that building. You see how it extends to that building, safety zone four, but if you go here, You see how it extends to that building, safety zone four, but if you go here, it moves away from it. And it opens up that area. But let's go to option two. Well, wait a minute. You're saying it's going to cost money for this, what if we did this? We reduce the, we reduce the runway by 1590 feet. Now we have a crossway that's 2,400 feet. As a pilot, I can tell you that 2,400 feet is not my favorite runway. It, the, the length of it, right? You, you, you all, you, you always want more runway for obvious reasons. However, in discussions with the FAA and Caltrans relative to our critical aircraft, right? This runway would be minimally, barely sufficient. So that, so for me, there's a safety concern here. But the, the, the other side is this. The runway, the Crosswind Runway is only used 2% of the time. So it's 2% of the time, right? We would not in this scenario destroy the entire pavement. So the rest of the runway, the physical structure would still be there. But the cons of this is, it's not funded by the FAA, we would bear the cost, but there's no environmental cost. And the actual cost of doing this is minimal because there's an existing connector there anyway. Now look at what happens to the safety zone. If you compare this safety zone to this safety zone, you can see it moves even further. So what's happening here is with the shortening of the runway, re- uh, uh, effectively pilots would say, you're just shortening the runway, but the technical thing is we're relocating the threshold, which effectively is shortening the runway. We are able to do a number of things. I would characterize it as a win-win. It's not my favorite win, but it's a win because we still have the Crosswind Runway and we still have the ability to use that pavement surface. From a CDD and a city perspective, it opens up many vistas for potential development. The other one is, you know what? If you're going to close a little bit, just close the whole thing, right? Absolutely, as I would say to Renee, uh, this is one hill I'd be worth dying on, but I can't, I can only, I can only, I can only make my case. And the case is, preserve the city's commitment to the airport as critical infrastructure. No plan to, to, uh, to close the airport. Uh, you can configure it at, with one runway. There are tons of airports around here with one ru- one way, run, one, one runway. San Carlos, Marina, um, Palo Alto, Half Moon Bay, there's tons of it. The commitment by the municipal airport to preserve the aeronautical activity, it would require the layout plan to be updated. It'd take at least a year to do that. The sponsor would be required to do some FAA imaginations and also with Caltrans because Caltrans is the one that issues the permit for the airport, okay? And then the final one, the elephant in the room discussion is this. Let's just close the whole thing. So we, what we did is I sat down with the FAA and said, I want to close the airport, I want you to take me through the possible, what would I have to do to do that? I'm, I'm going to do it, the council's approved it, we're going to make it happen, just take me through the litany of checklist. And so there are two things I discovered. What I'm about to show you is the checklist. But what I've discovered since then is there's still a lot of other work that needs to be done. But in, in, in summary, it works like this. There are at least five federal considerations that have to be made. First of all, the FAA is going to push back because they're going to claim that Watsonville is part of the NIPIS, which is the National Plan of Integrated Aerospace System and it has to do with their view of us as an important aviation asset. Um, the, one of the biggest ones they said is, well, what are you going to, what is Watsonville going to do with the 250 some planes that are on the field? You're going to have to find a home for them. You can't just tell 250 planes go someplace else. You've got to proactively find a place for them. And then what about the businesses on the field that are aviation oriented? You've got to find a place for them. If the, and, and the first place you go is nearby airports. So that's Hollister, Marina, Salinas, Half Moon Bay, places that are reasonable. If they have the space, then they can move there, right? Because they don't have any other place to go. If those places can't afford for them to be there or can't co- accommodate them, the FAA will say, okay, we'll give them some money to build hangars and build new space, but Watsonville is going to have to pay at least half of it. So now you're going to have to pay to have to help, to help move these aircraft to this new location. Federal and state considerations. There's a whole bunch of forms you're going to have to fill out. This is a, uh, paperwork nightmare and it just takes time. It took up, the airport layout plan took us three years to do, there's no telling how long it would take these forms to do. Uh, the FAA has made it very cl- uh, the, the, the state fish and wildlife have made it very clear, wait a minute, Watsonville is critical habitat for two animals and a plant. One of the animals is the state amphibian. What are you guys going to do with the red-legged frog? You've got 900,000 Califor- uh, tar plant, where are you going to put them? Everyone you kill, you got to pay for and they're expensive. That's why we don't kill them, right? We try to take care of them. Additionally, uh, they, they say that you're going to have to pay back the grants. So during the time that I've been there, I know under my tenure, we've gotten over $5 million. In Don French's time, he purchased Clear Zone property in the Gilbertson area and the FAA gave him 1.3 million dollars. That 1.3 million dollar real estate purchase was in 1993. I would hazard to guess that in the next 30 years, that 1.3 million dollars is substantially more and as part of it's in the coastal zone. The FAA is going to want not what they gave you, but what the fair market value is. The city would have to pay that back. Uh, and then there's legal considerations, there are some ground leases that you have that are, go out to at least 2040. And the biggest one that I would, uh, think would be a major issue would be the litigation for tenants and loo- and users that would feel that they have been unfairly treated. So with that said, what I would like to do is propose that you do the following in this order, because the order is important. Adopt the sequo adendum to the ERI. Adopt the master plan update. Adopt the layout plan update and direct the staff to conduct further development of the four options to bring back to you by March 1st, 2024. Questions?
Council members will see them.
Could you go back to the map that has the aerial photograph of the impact? There we go. And this is the, um, I would, I'll call it the, the lar- yeah, no, the next one. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, option two.
So if the Crosswind Runway is completely closed, like, there wasn't a map option for this?
Absolutely right.
So can you, can you describe to me how this would impact if there was a?
I, I, I absolutely can. All of the yellow, all of the, it was described in, in, uh, in, in the CDD presentation, right? But all of the yellow to the left, right? And all of the yellow coming off of that runway to the right go away and there's even more area.
And then on the opposite side as well?
Yes.
So left, right and purple?
Correct.
Okay, and, and that wasn't a, uh, something you wanted to draw?
No, no, it was something that had already been presented. And I didn't have, I didn't have a copy of it. And I, I, it's not necessarily, I mean, i- it's an option that we di- we didn't, I didn't deny it. I mean, wha- what would happen, it would come right here. But what you would have is you would have, it would come after this slide, you'd have this, but there'd be nothing on the left and right. It would only be at the north and the south.
Okay, and could you go back to the cons for that option?
I, I asked, uh, in anticipation of this, I had put CDD kind of put the force, I asked them to put the slides together. So maybe, I don't know how long it would take to pull that up.
That would be great.
No.
Oh. Oh, Alan, oh, okay.
Just, just, it has to, just, see?
Sure. It's the four slides.
So just, just to let council know, I do have to take this one down and put up Justin. So there's no way to go side by side, is that okay?
That's okay, because we have it on our computer, because it was sent to us.
Full transparency. Uh, we, we're not hiding anything. Would you like this, would you like to have a seat?
And then you identified the, uh, biggest con of the complete closure of the Crosswind Runway as, um, the financing, that it would be, uh, a, a cost issue, is that accurate?
No, no, no.
Okay, sorry.
The, the, from, from an airport perspective, right? The, the, the biggest con of closing the Crosswind Run- Run- Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm sorry. The, the biggest, um, downside of closing the Crosswind Runway is a lack of aviation utility. Although there are plenty of runways that have only one runway, the fact that we have two runways is extremely important. When we went to the FAA to defa- to, we, we made a pitch to the FAA to fund the Crosswind Runway. We, I, I, I knew early on that we were probably going to be on the hit list. And so we, we wrote a letter to them and says, hey, look, we have coastal marine layer that comes in. Seven days into my job here, a family of four were killed when they crashed into the hospital because they decided they were going to not use a Crosswind Runway. That was a time for me that really had an impact on me and I committed to, we got to make this place safer. So preserving that Crosswind Runway is extremely important because we are a heavy training environment. Fixed wing training, rotary wing training, a Crosswind Runway is key to safety. So closing that Crosswind Runway, it, it, to me is an anathema because it really does reduce the, 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 um, the utility of the airport.
And only 2% of the total flights use the Crosswind Runway?
That is correct. And that, and tha- and that is because of the wind, the wind, the wind, there's a study called the wind study and it has to do with the fact that the, the winds come off the ocean and they, and, and you fly into the wind. And on very rare occasion do we get, um, usage of the Crosswind Runway. That 2% number though, was impacted because of the safety issue I talked about. In 2018, the FAA told me, you can't take off on runway 27 anymore. Our numbers immediately dropped. And the reason we couldn't take off on 27, think of a four-way stop. At a four-way stop, we know what the convention is. But what would happen if there was a building at the corner of the four-way stop and you couldn't see the other guy coming up? Right? You're coming up, you don't know who got there first. We have a situation like that at the airport. And the FAA said, you got to fix that, Rayvon. And the way to fix it was to shorten the runway on one side so you could see and they were going to pay for it. But then just a month ago, they say they're not going to pay for it.
So what was the usage of the Crosswind Runway before the FAA identified the?
Four to five percent. So, oh, still very small, still very small. Nowhere, nowhere near, um, you know, 50%. I, I would never claim that. But once again, it's like insurance. You don't, it's when you need it. It came in very helpful in many instances during the levy review when President Biden came in. I mean, there are times when that Crosswind Runway is vital to airport safety and airport utility. And that's why I'm a, a fan of the Crosswind Runway.
And I will just add to the other benefit of a Crosswind Runway, it's kind of a resiliency. So if anytime there is an incident or a maintenance issue with the primary runway, you still have another viable runway that's op- operational.
Our local, um, airports that are around us, Hollister, Mon- everybody else have a Crosswind Runway? Anybody not have a Crosswind Runway?
Hollister has a Crosswind Runway, Salinas has a Crosswind Runway. Uh, Marina does not. But Marina has nowhere near the operations that we have. So if you look at, my competitors, the airport managers that I go back and forth with trying to steal their clients and get the pilots and get them to mine, are Hollister and, um, Reed Hill View, Hollister, uh, Salinas and Reed Hill View, right? That, that's, those are the people that, that we want to get. And all those runways are multiple runways.
And the 2% approximately, how many flights are we talking, like taking off and landing, right?
It'd be 2% of 60,000.
Okay.
Right, so it's not, it's not-
I'm terrible at math.
So it's, um, tw- tw- what, 1,200?
1,200 flights, okay.
Hey, my mom was a teacher.
In what way does this, or does this master plan help manage our litigation exposure around the airport? One of the concerns that I have over the last 10 years, and granted, we can't, we can't predict or help um, or manage in any way who sues us. But one of the things I'm sick of is the amount of times that we have litigation over airport usage. Is anything in this plan help us in terms of, uh, I know we have to deal with the master plan on this, but is there anything here that is helpful in terms of managing, uh, some of the litigation we've seen in the past?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to speak and ask Eric's way because he has experience in more airports. From, from my perspective, I would say that during this three-year period, one of the key things I looked at was, how do we future-proof the plan? And how do we make sure that it's in accordance with design criteria? Because if I'm in a, if I'm aligned with the FAA's good design criteria, I'm doing the right thing. It's pretty hard to sue someone when you're doing the right thing. Although you can sue anyone for anything and, but, um, I don't, I don't, I thi- I think the plan as it is, is, um, is in accordance with design criteria.
Yeah, I, I think so. And it, it's hard with any planning study really being able to prevent litigation or people being upset. You can't satisfy everyone, but I will say we tried our hardest to hold those public meetings, get people to attend, look at the feedback, really see what can be accommodated by being asked um, of the airport and those sensitivities. Um, and part of that, as I said, we looked at these alternatives, some of them are unpopular. I think for the, for the runway visibility zone issue, we looked at, I think, eight to 10 different options about how this could be solved. And in some cases, what's the best worst scenario to meet these design standards? But a lot of it came back to, you have to meet the design standards. And the part, and half that reason, one, it's safety, but the other reason is if you want to get federal funding for any of these projects, you have to meet those standards. And at an airport like Watsonville, like 90% of the GA airports in the US, if you don't have that federal funding, you will not be able to operate the airport. The ma- the maintenance is just too, the pavement cost is too much and then you start falling out of your grant assurances because you are no longer providing a safe, operable environment uh, without federal funding is what happens, so.
I, I thank you, council, for indulging me, just one more question. What I'm interested in and what I'm comparing in my mind is the options that you have presented today, a very thoughtful plan. I also want to know what our CDD options are. Um, and I think we really meaningfully need to balance, um, to the extent there is some minor conflicts here around our future use. I mean, these are big questions we're asking. And, uh, my question to Principal Planner Meek is, uh, assuming, you know, let's say the Crosswind Runway is closed, what the difference of that meaningfully means for us in terms of what we could develop around those areas? I just want to make, I, I want to understand, I basically want the missing slide. I want to see the differences between these three plans and I want to be able to measure that impact. Are we talking, you know, uh, it's hard to just see it on a map without, you know, really understanding, like, are we talking, um, you know, if we just shorten it, could we really get the impact we want versus a complete closure? Um, and really understanding the impact of those three options and what can, can we balance? Um, but I, I, so it's not a question to you, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to hear from, uh, Principal Planner Meek.
I think we all have the same question.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Justin Meek with the Community Development Department. Uh, if you wouldn't mind advancing a few of the slides. I had prepared earlier today a couple that we thought might come up and hopefully will help address some of the questions that you have. Let's continue, this is just some background and some of the challenges we have with some of the growth scenarios with just infill only. Looking at potentially developable land, we've talked about everything. Talked about everything about closing the airport, but also looking at some of the growth areas beyond the airport. This slide is just highlighting that there's significant growth potential, not only downtown, but along some of our key corridors, including Freedom. Let's go to the next slide. We've heard a lot from the community and council alike on what's the development potential specifically of Kmart, click once. And so why don't we look a little bit more closely along that portion of Watsonville, next slide. So just highlighting, you know, under existing conditions today, no changes to the airport or the airport safety zones as it's currently configured, no changes to the threshold. Looking at that corridor, that area in blue represents potential infill that we're evaluating as part of the general plan update. As you can see, there's a fair amount of potential infill, you know, somewhere around 150 units in a roughly four acre site. Um, but the Kmart building and surrounding area would not be, be allowed to redevelop moving forward, next slide. Showing what would happen as you move the threshold as Director Rayvon Williams noted, would essentially allow for that portion of the Kmart building and surrounding properties to be more easily redeveloped. And we might see somewhere on the order of maybe 400-ish units, that could be possible in that scenario. Next slide. Moving the safety zones with a even further shortened Crosswind Runway, this one is the 1,600 scenario, would allow not only the Kmart building, but the corner and some of the nearby vacant lots on Green Valley, all of which could be more easily redeveloped. As you can see, you could likely get a broader range of units, assuming the kind of infill development that we're seeing elsewhere along the Freedom Corridor of three and four stories, um, at sort of medium density type developments, standards. Um, you'll note that in all these scenarios, the development potential in Buena Vista is largely the same. In a much larger area, I should note. Next slide. Closure of the Crosswind Runway. So, you know, under that scenario, since the Crosswind Runway would no longer be used, associated safety zones would also be eliminated. That further unlocks not only the Kmart site area, but also elsewhere along the Freedom Corridor as well as in the growth area as outlined in Measure U and Q in the Buena Vista area. That could also then, uh, be further have less limited development potential in that zone. So look, let's go to one more slide just to show side by side each of those different scenarios and relatively what are the development potential under all those considerations. Pretty big.
This isn't a, uh, just to, I appreciate your time. There are no easy decisions to be made here. Um, every, all seven of us care the most about our population and the people of Watsonville. Um, you know, we are dealing with a very real housing crisis um and the opportunity to develop and make some hard decisions, so thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, counsel for allowing me a little bit of time.
Anybody else? This is my turn. Can you, uh, bring up the slide about where you said the, the airport closure? Um, what you did, because you didn't bring to me one of the things, because Scotts Valley has closed the airport and it didn't take that long and you didn't bring me a period of time and how how that deactivated it. And Santa Cruz did the same thing. Uh, Santa Cruz has an airport in Bonny Doon.
Yeah, but that's a private airport.
But it's closed.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a private, okay, a couple of things.
Scotts, uh, Scotts Valley.
Alright, so comparing Scotts Valley and and I'm just being factual, right? I, first of all, I can certainly provide you a timeframe, right? I would, I would, I would estimate.
Could you put that, unless you need another thing, could you put that back up? Because we.
I certainly can provide, I can certainly provide you a timeframe, let me, let me bring it back up. I can certainly provide you a timeframe. I can certainly provide you a timeframe based on.
Yeah, because this looks to me a lot of excuses, a line of excuses, because yes, there's steps, there's steps that you have to take.
Yes.
Yes, there's steps that you have to take, but you know, I could, you know, I could, they're really could put, you know, uh, you know, um, the kids, the kids day and you know, add on top the things that are not gonna happen if the airport was closed.
No, 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 I'm, well, let's just look at the federal, first of all, I can provide you a time schedule. Secondly, comparing Bonny Doon and Scotts Valley to a sixty thousand, three hundred acre general aviation airport is is beyond apples and oranges, so you can't make that consideration. But what I can do is, as I committed, as I will commit to this, is I can come back to you with a timeframe of what would be required. I'm not offering excuses, I'm, what I'm trying to do here is I'm trying to state facts. And so the timeframe, the FAA, we're gonna go to them and we're gonna do the Form seventy four eighty, which is the deactivation form. When that form is submitted to them, I have no control over how long it takes them to process it, so that's time. We're gonna go to Caltrans, you're gonna submit a CR, CCR thirty five, thirty six. I have no control over that and I don't know what the timeframe is, but we can ask them. But I can tell you that given their staffing and their structure and their funding, it's not gonna be a timeframe that says it's three hundred and sixty five days. But I will make every reasonable effort to come back with a timeframe. These aren't excuses, these are factual, actual data things that have to happen, just like we went through the master plan. I couldn't go, I had to do an inventory of conditions, I couldn't just tell them, give me a master plan. So it's a process, not an event. If you asked me in my professional opinion how long it would take, I will tell you the same thing I've told Renee and I've told Susie. It's the thirty 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 plan, Santa Monica, Reed Hillview, Whitman, thirty years. It takes thirty years to close an airport, right? That's just, that's just history. Well, what's the other thirty? It's thirty million dollars because you've got underground storage tanks, you've got mediation, you've got to move these other airplanes. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's got to go on. And unfortunately, it's probably gonna take thirty professionals, the preponderance of them aren't engineers, aren't architects, but they're lawyers. So I can go back, more than happy to and is committed to this by March first and give you the most comprehensive timeline I want to. But I most certainly assure you, these aren't excuses.
And you know, um, one of the things that, uh, that thank you for CDD to bring, uh, because you know, um, even on the um closure of the, what's it called?
Crosswind.
Crosswind, um, it provides us a lot, a lot of economic development because we have so many restrictions on Freedom, on airport. You know, just, uh, you know, we're not gonna get away from the, you know, uh, what the community as a community, you you know, what, you know, we get talked about a lot is the power of high school, you know, lights at the field because of the restrictions. The airport has put upon.
Understood, but the airport doesn't, we don't, we don't list those restrictions.
Yeah.
Those restrictions are listed by federal and state authorities.
Um, but like I said.
Understood.
Those, those are the, the uh, things that we, that we and I, you know, hear over and over. The restrictions, um, the housing restrictions, we just, you know, we just had an election not too long ago where there were, we were stronghold and we were placed on, you know, our, our limited growth opportunities. And by, by doing, by doing that, you know, everybody in the, the, the other side that was, that was saying that we shouldn't grow talked about freedom, freedom, airport, you need to grow, we're getting sued on airport. On just a few developments that we're going through. You know, if, you know, you're doing a great job, like I always said to you.
Not good enough.
Um, but at some point, we, we got, we gotta cut our losses and what the community opportunities. And this is a community asset that, that has function, uh, in my view, currently functions is a, uh, it's a playground for rich people. Um, that have an airplane because nobody else ha- has that, that asset, you know, that potential of acreages that that there is for that community.
Totally, totally understood, Mayor Montesino. And one of the things that I shared with the city manager, Mendez and Justin and Susie is when this, when this first came up and the FAA said they weren't going to fund the crosswind runway, I, I didn't hide it, I didn't, I didn't try to stonewall it, I didn't try to delay it. Um, as soon as it happened, I immediately just rang the bell, informed the pilot community, informed the city manager to say, hey, look, this is an opportunity, let's face it, the tables have turned, the tables have turned. And so my strategy was one, well, let's at least come up with a measured prudent approach that addresses some of the concerns you're, you're making. I, I get it, I mean, I absolutely get it. I can't tell you how much I get it and so in order to put my money where my mouth is, you gotta come up with something. And that's why you have these options and these approaches, because I think it is for the greater good. But it is critical infrastructure also and my job is to try to do everything I can to preserve as much of that as possible.
Thank you. Councilor Clark.
Hello, Rayvonne, nice to see you. I have a quick question about uh slide number fourteen. It's the recommended development plan? Yes, so where it shows new aircraft storage facility, does that have any bearing on the crosswind? If it stays, gets reduced or if it goes away completely? Is that new aircraft storage gonna go in no matter what?
To, to Councilman Salsito, I mean, when she, the, the missing slide scenario reminds me of something along these lines. If, if the, to your question, no, because even if the crosswind runway is closed, my, my request would be, we're not tearing it up, it's not used. Once it's not used as an active runway, then Caltrans says safety zones go away. So we could still, we would still preserve that pavement for a couple of reasons. Number one, we need access to that development for new hangers, right? So we're not gonna tear it up and number two, if you're on downwind and you got a problem with your engine, it, it doesn't matter if it's closed, you're gonna land there.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I, I'm just saying is that the development of the new aircraft storage facilities?
Well, closing the crosswind runway won't impact those.
Okay, yeah, because I'm like, you know, do we have to do something with the crosswind in order to get the new facilities or are they coming no matter what? That was my, yeah.
The goal is they're coming no matter what, yeah.
Awesome, that is good to hear.
We've already had private developers to eighteen F come to us and say, hey, we'd like to build our own private hangars there, can we do that? And my answer is sure you can, I mean, but build them and then in thirty years, we own them, but.
Okay, and I think I just. What, what is the little purple, it's number fourteen, I mean, I read the description, but I don't understand it.
Oh, the parachute landing area.
Oh, that's what it is, okay, that's what PLA stands for, I'm like coordinating relocation of PLA while maintaining USPA. I'm like, I don't understand all this, okay, perfect, that's all I have. And uh, thank you very much for maintaining this critical, critical infrastructure. Um, I know it is really a contentious issue with many, many people, but I do remember the eighty nine earthquake and I remember that the airport was the only lifeline that we had to the outside world when all of the other infrastructure around us failed, all the roads, all the gas stations, everything else. The airport was our only lifeline, so just wanted to reiterate that, thank you.
Councilor.
Could, could you send that to us? We've all been trying to, they took, you took it off so fast. And we all wanted to look at all four different areas, so even just that slide.
Changing slides, yes, I think we're there, we can provide it to you or we could try putting it back up.
With just the slide of the comparisons, the four?
Yeah, whatever's, whatever was shown here will be part of the record and we'll get it to you.
Yeah, like now, so we can see it?
Well, no, they want it on the screen.
Oh, on the screen, yeah, sure.
Yeah, because I mean, like I said, I have a copy of this, so I can look at it on the thing. Thank you, this is very thorough and, um, and you were very thorough about the closing aspects because that's why it usually takes how long to close?
I have no idea.
Well, I mean, the ranges, I mean, not particularly ours, but the ones that have been closed over the fifteen to thirty years, yeah.
Though I will say, they haven't actually closed yet.
Okay.
It's still like a constant ongoing process.
Yeah, okay.
And like with Reed Hillview and even like UC Davis.
Right.
They, it's one of those things that you start hitting that twenty year grant lifecycle and then somehow another grant is given.
Right.
And then you start the cycle over and over, so most of these airports that have been heading towards closure haven't actually closed yet.
Okay.
As, as part of this, just real briefly, as part of this, I went back and I said, let me do some history. This conversation was held and published in the Santa Cruz Sentinel in nineteen ninety one. Had that effort been started then, even now, you probably wouldn't be closed.
Yeah, okay, so then um, the crosswind runway was okayed to be closed by the FAA, is that correct? And that we'd still be a viable airport, huh, or?
I would, I wouldn't use the word, I wouldn't use the word okay to be closed.
Okay, that's why I asked, so.
What I asked them is, I said, you, you have no, you are no longer going to fund it, that we get no money in the future. However, the regulations say that um, funding at a federal obligated airport has a duration period. Tell me what the duration period is for our crosswind runway. And based on the conversation last Friday, that duration period ends twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. So that means there's no obligation that the city has as a sponsor and the city could in fact take an action to shorten the runway, eight hundred and seventy feet, sixteen hundred feet or close it, put X's on the end and it wouldn't be used.
So what does that mean? Put X's if you got?
That's how you, that's how you deactivate it.
Yeah, so, so, so let's say we take action today, like what, what is, what is, yeah, what does that mean?
Yeah, if you wanted to take action today.
Well, gee whiz, that was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, if you wanted to take action today, you'd have to go through the process of the seventy four eighty form, right? To deactivate the run, not the airport, but the runway. You'd have to go through that process to deactivate the runway and then the FAA, it'd take them some time, but yes, you could move in that direction.
But like, sort of like, I'm just talking about like timeframe, so let's say we, we, we tell you to close the, the.
Mm-hmm, crosswind runway.
Crossway runway and what does that look like for our economic development? Like, you know, in a year, the, the zones, talking about the zone, I mean, the, the, the runway is still gonna be.
I defer to the gentleman from CDD.
So if I can add, so you can give us direction to do any of these options, then we will bring it back. The, the actions today are what you have before you, we didn't agenda this, it's just being shown. So you give us direction and then we will bring back a full discussion of what it means and we would bring back whatever actions we need to take to make it happen.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, so thank you for putting it back on, Ally, appreciate that. So looking at uh, the orange striped area. Could you clarify that again about what the orange striped area can be used for?
The, the striped, orange striped area to the west of the airport is considered the Buena Vista growth area
Uh-huh.
as outlined in the Action Parho Valley effort from over twenty years ago and then as part of Measure U and then extended as Measure Q. So that's within, you know, a future growth area that's beyond the city limits. Uh, that was part of our general plan for possible annexation and development in the future. There's a range of land uses that would be allowed in there from low density residential to higher density, maybe a little bit of commercial as well. But that's, that's part of the, um, that's part of the current general plan as a potential growth area that was also the subject of the lawsuit that undermined the Vista twenty thirty plan because of abuse of discretion when the first round involved eliminating zones, safety zones three.
Right.
And that was where the courts found that the city had erred in that matter.
Thank you, and, and the cost of maintaining the crosswind runway, short or shorter or at, as it is for the city of Watsonville?
Minimal, I mean, the, the runway is a visual only runway, it's not lit, there's no instrument.
You say minimal, but what, what does a dollar sign attach to that?
I, I would, I would have to do some numbers.
Give me a ballpark.
Fifty thousand dollars over the, over the course of uh, three years?
Three years, and would there be any, you know, major maintenance that would have to occur or?
No, because the runway, no, the runway was just rehabbed in two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
And that's a seven year period and that's where I come up with my three years, right? So it was, it was, it was rehabbed into that, a new surface, right? And so striped, but there are no lights, there's no instrument approach, there's, there's nothing special about that runway other than it's a utilized for when the marine layer moves in. And it's also utilized as an opportunity for an instrument approach, but you're doing a circle, so.
So we're four years into a seven year lifecycle for having.
For the pavement and the asphalt, that's correct.
The pavement and the asphalt, how much does that cost?
Uh, the last time we did a, in two thousand nineteen, that grant was four hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. But uh, you take out the striping, probably about, probably about four hundred, three hundred and seventy five to four hundred thousand dollars. But that would be uh, another seven to ten years from now, that's how I get the fifty thousand dollars. We would just, fifty thousand dollars would just be maintenance, just a basic maintenance, crack, fill, seal, painting, striping.
Right.
But we don't envision that the um, the runway would have to have any substantial maintenance over the next ten years because it's just not used that often.
Right, but you still have to prepare and plan for.
Oh, absolutely, and, and we would have, and as a result.
Where would that four hundred thousand dollars, three seventy five to four hundred thousand dollars come from?
Where did it or where would it?
Where would it?
It would come from, it would come from the enterprise fund.
The enterprise.
Yeah, everything that's on the airport, we pay for it or the federal government pays for it.
I'm, I'm pretty clear, but I just wanted to clarify for the public as I walk through what I'm thinking. So then what other uses could you have for that four hundred thousand dollars based on that, on, what is that? That's number fourteen? Yeah, on, on the previous one, the, you have a whole bunch of projects here.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so the, so in those projects was listed, the FAA continued funding of that runway. That was in the, that twenty nine million dollars that you saw.
Yeah.
Now that they're not gonna do it, you know, that would come out, so we, we don't, we don't, we wouldn't have those funds
Right.
for that runway, right? And so now we would have to figure out other means coming from the, because five million dollars, four point five million of expenses, we put aside five, five hundred thousand dollars and we, that's how we build our enterprise fund. So the idea is to keep building that fund and we're about eight hundred thousand dollars now. So if we keep at this rate, I think that within the next two years, we'll be at a million dollars of enterprise funds, right? I mean, we, we do something, a project, we get ninety five percent from other people, right? So the idea is to take that excess and put it back in the airport. So we'd find another use for it, but if, if the runway remained open, the cost to fund it and main, to maintain it over the coming years would be minimal and it's not, it's not a lot.
Okay, uh, Justin, Mr. Meeks. Um, do you have any projections about uh, the number three? I'm looking at zero, one, two, three on there. For revenue that could possibly come into the city of Watsonville if we did the number three, close crosswind?
In terms of revenue from new development?
New development, new businesses?
This one is just to explore what potential number of dwelling units.
Uh-huh.
We don't have a figure for the amount of commercial development that might also be unlocked, that's something that we could explore, however.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilor Clark.
Rayvonne, if the crosswind is deactivated, you say that the tarmac stays?
Yes.
Okay. Is it maintained to a minimal standard at that point or is it just left to follow?
No, it wouldn't be, it, it would, it would be, it would be maintained even less than that standard. We, the standard that you were talking about was a shortened runway, twenty four hundred feet. You close the whole thing, then there's a, there's a, there's a process that we go through in which we mark the runway, don't land here. So now there's gonna be no more traffic on it, so there's no, there's this thing called PCI, it's a payment condition index. So it's not gonna have those stressors, but what we can do is we can use, we, we, we can use it for taxiing, we can use it for emergency procedures. A good example of how it would be used is the Hellattack Base. When the Santa Cruz fires were here, we gave them the crosswind runway, right? And they, and they, they set up there, right? So we would use it for that. So we would use it for that, so there are other uses we would find for it. In no uncertain terms would we tear up that pavement, we would keep that pavement there. And we'd figure out a way to maintain it just for that. For instances, Red Cross, Cal Fire, you know, United Way Fund, emergency, we, we're gonna keep it there, but it won't be a formal landing facility with compatibility zone requirements, but we would not get rid of it.
So even though it's deactivated, we could still use it in case of emergencies?
That is correct.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sosito.
Mayor, will we be providing, um, like, comments before our vote, or will that be after? I just wanted to.
Well, after we go to the, uh, public.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, seeing no other comments, so go out to the public. Would like, the public like to weigh in this item at the agenda.
And, Mr. Mayor, just, just once again, the, the same admonition I gave earlier prior to the ordinance on cruising applies here, so comments, public comments must be specific to this agenda item.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, my name is Dave Derryary, I own an air taxi company that operates out of the Watsonville Airport. And, uh, we do our maintenance here. I wanted to talk a little bit about economic development. As Ravon mentioned, it brings in, uh, the airport brings in millions of dollars of, um, economic development, or economic, um, opportunity for the, uh, for the city. So, I, I'm not sure that if you were to close that runway, you would get as much of a net benefit as you think you might. For one thing, I'm a big believer in preservation of agriculture in this county. And so the airport and agriculture work well together. I, I really liked Justin's presentation at our last, uh, Watsonville Airport Advisory Committee meeting. I feel like there is good room for, um, trade-offs. So one thing you might consider is if you shorten the runway, you could develop the infill while preserving agriculture to the west. Maybe you could find other areas that don't inhibit the, um, the airport. If you wanna develop, you know, if you wanna give away your agriculture land for, um, for more houses and more traffic on Highway One, maybe there's a better place to do it than Buena Vista. So, um, if you were to keep the runway there, maybe we, you could have a trade-off where you develop where the city is, but not give away the agriculture land. The, uh, future of the city, um, you know, Highway One's not gonna get much bigger. I mean, they're working on it, but, um, we need the transportation the airport brings in. So new technology will make the, uh, the air transportation safer, quieter, more affordable, and environmentally sustainable. So, um, the way it is today is not the way it's gonna be in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else from the community like to weigh in this, Adam?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Ravon, good to see you. My name is Chris Gallardi, uh, I own specialized helicopters at the Watsonville Airport. We've been there for quite a while. I've watched this airport grow and progress under Director Williams' expert guidance, and it's, it's been interesting to, to watch. We've had our problems, but we have, uh, looked each other in the face many, many times and seen this airport, I think, in my opinion, do much, much better. Uh, I believe strongly in the fact that airports are a marriage with the cities that they're around, and we have issues with the county, we've got issues with the city from an airport perspective, but all in all, we've worked them out over time. And I didn't expect to come here today really, um, ever looking at closing a runway nine or two-seven specifically, because it's so important to all the operations at, at the Watsonville Airport. It's a rare gem, and I think you should be looking at it as such, and I've heard it from so many different council members that preceded you guys, and mayors, and the citizenry of Watsonville over all these years. And it's, um, hopeful, I'm hopeful that, uh, you will look at that airport as it is an absolute resource, and it should be guided by the people that use it, and that is the Santa Cruz County, Monterey, Monterey uses us, and certainly every citizen in Watsonville. So I appreciate your time.
Can he yield the thirty-eight seconds to me?
No, sorry. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back, oh, one more.
Hello, council, uh, my name is Chris Hadlin. Um, sorry, I'm a little tired tonight. I am the chief pilot for Granite Construction Company. I've been in the role for thirteen years, I'm probably one of the biggest pain in the sides of Mr. Ravon Williams here. He's smirking. Um, a number of years ago, um, I had to make the difficult decision to remove Granite Construction's flight department after being on the field since the fifties. And in fact, the founder of Granite Construction, Bert Scott, was the original airport manager, or one of the original airport managers in the nineteen twenties. So we have over a hundred years of aviation, business aviation in Watsonville. I think Granite built this current airport for the Navy, is that correct?
Part of it, yeah.
Part of it. Just as a training base for World War Two, for, um, back in the forties. And I think the council, um, needs to also look at the businesses such as Granite. We've had to move both of our aircraft because of the size of the aircraft do not fit the airport anymore. And we would, of course, like to come back if the airport were to be capable of handling the aircraft that we fly. Driscoll's recently bought an aircraft the same size as ours, and has moved it to Monterey with, where ours is based. They still have one airport, one airplane at Watsonville. Wellpick is selling their plane. The businesses are moving out of the airport because, in my opinion, this is my opinion, the environment is not friendly to the businesses. And I think, um, the council should consider that the businesses bring jobs to this area. So, um, that's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies, my name is Mercedes Yurid. I'm a resident of Watsonville. I also have an airplane at the airport, and I am on the advisory committee with Renee. I appreciate all your efforts. Um, I'm, I see that the, the main focus is on building housing, because everybody's screaming for housing. I'd like to see more economic developments as married with keeping the airport there, because if you don't have economic development and using the spaces that you already have available to you, then I can't see the marriage, like, getting better for the whole city and for the runway, for the airport environment, and also for the, um, the city, and for what's available there. But that's all I had.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for council.
Mayor, we do have someone on Zoom.
Oh, someone on Zoom.
Tracy, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Xavier, I'm a Watsonville resident as well as an airport employee. Oh, sorry.
Hello?
Hi, Tracy, go ahead.
Um, thank you. I just was, um, listening in, and I wanted to speak up specifically to you, Eduardo. I just felt very strongly about a statement you made, and I just wanna assure you that not everyone that has a hangar or an aircraft or that uses the airport is rich. I believe that was the word you used. My husband grew up in Watsonville, and he dreamed of one day being able to fly as a child at the airport there in the town where he grew up. And, um, through a lot of hard work, he has seen that dream come true. He's now a private pilot, he's an aircraft owner, and also a tenant. So I would just like to, to, to let you know that we do not consider ourselves rich by any means. He works hard, we live paycheck to paycheck, and we make sacrifices so that he's able to fly and have things that we have. So, um, I just wanted to correct that statement, that that's not, that's not a true statement. It's maybe, uh, considered a stereotype, I would say. But then, we are also members of EAA, and we run the Young Eagles program there, where our members donate their planes, their gas, and their time to fly local youth and introduce them to aviation. So, um, I encourage you to come to Sixty Aviation Way. On November fourth, we have our next rally planned, it should be a big one. We've got over fifty kids signed up to come that wanna come and fly. So come to the airport Saturday morning and see what the airport is, how it's truly impacting the city and our youth, and encouraging our youth, and to, to have that go away just for housing, then what do our youth have if they don't have that? So, um, that's all I had to say, I just wanted to sit, to correct that statement, that not everyone at the airport is rich, and the airport is being useful and, and is a great asset. And I would be devastated to see that leave.
Thank you. I guess there's one more public comment? There's one more.
Mayor, there's another.
Oh, there's another one, I'm soon.
Barry, go ahead.
Um, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, um, uh, this is Barry Porter. I'm a, uh, a tenant, or I have an airplane in a hangar at the Watsonville Airport. And I'm just curious, I'd like to understand why, um, you know, I, I completely understand the need for more housing and expansion in that area, but it always seems like we're talking about spreading out more. And even with the airport property, there's only a finite amount of surface area in the city of Watsonville. I, I never seem to hear anything about, uh, building upward. And, uh, you know, case in point, Santa Cruz downtown is, is just built. I'm not sure if it's a six or seven-story building down there. Um, why, why do we not talk about that in Watsonville? And I'm a big supporter of the airport, I think it's important to our community, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is that it? I'm soon? Go ahead.
Thank you. Once again, uh, my name is Xavier, I'm a Watsonville resident as well as an airport employee. I wanna say that my job position there really has me face-to-face with a lot of the community members that we have here. And I wanted to say that the airport really provides a unique opportunity. The pla, the region that it's in, as was mentioned, is, uh, good for training opportunities for upcoming pilots. And I've seen a lot of, um, students, I, I worked a lot with the fourth-grade field trips, as well as providing information for the EAA Young Eagles. And so our, our fourth-grade field trips are something that just started last year, we're into the second year. And I think for having an airport in our city since nineteen forty-eight, well, longer than that, but as a municipal airport, uh, we really should have a lot more pilots that have originated from Watsonville. And I think with these fourth-grade, uh, field trips that we started up, it really provides an opportunity, or it makes it more tangible as a career opportunity for the children in our community. Because growing up, um, we didn't have those fourth-grade field trips when I was in elementary school. And I think if I had known that it was something that was actually possible, I myself might have considered a career in aviation. Now that I work there, it's definitely something that I'm considering. But as an eight-year-old, knowing that that is a possibility, I feel like it could have made a huge impact in my life. And I really hope that it's doing that for the current fourth graders that are getting to experience going there. Especially the kids in Paharo Elementary that this year were impacted by the floodings. I think that was something that I really enjoyed being able to experience.
Thanks. Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back, Councilmember Clark.
I have another question, uh, Ravon. So I was actually just kind of shocked by hearing that Granite, uh, is no longer at our airport, and that a couple others are looking to leave. One of the comments that was made was, you know, if we can fit, we'll come back. Does that mean runway length, or like, storage size for the planes that they're now using, or, okay?
I, I think that, that decision is ultimately, of course, up to the, uh, the operator.
Up to, exactly, yeah, I just wasn't sure if they'd left because our runway doesn't accommodate, or our storage space, or whatever.
Oh, oh, okay. So, uh, the municipal airport, um, has corporate hangars.
Yes.
Which are larger than the standard T-hangers for smaller aircraft. The corporate hangars are three thousand square feet, feet each, they have an office in them. But the tail height, the, the top, the, the distance from the deck to the top of the hangar roof is fixed. So as companies such as Granite and Driscoll's, I mean, as they expand their flight departments and their aircraft have more capability, they can fly further, they can fly faster, they can fly higher, then the configuration of the aircraft changes. When the configuration of the aircraft changes, you can't fit in a hangar. Right? And so they have to find other places, right? And so our strategy has always been, since, since, I inherited it, is a three-thousand-foot hangar that really fits for what's called small, light business jets. So these are the, the citations, the, the, you don't, there's smaller jets that have a tail height that is, that fit, that's fit in our hangar. Wealthy individuals will be there that have their single aircraft, yes. But if you're talking to a business that is really trying to go from here to New York, or from here to Vancouver, or Mexico, its chances are it's gonna need a bigger hangar. Additionally, when you get those larger aircraft, and this is one of the points that Chris and I talked about, they need longer runway, because they need longer runway for that capability. And our runways are, our runway is limited. Really more of a storage issue, I would say, that in my experience, than it is a runway, but the runway does have an impact.
Okay. I, I had one other thing, and then I just completely, my brain shut down. It's, sure, but I, I will probably buzz back again.
You say the runway wouldn't have impact, but we're talking about our main runway, correct? And, and what kind of impact would that have? I mean, specifically, we're talking about what Granite has, um, but any other migrating, uh, company at the same time? I mean, what do they need that we don't have?
We need, we needed, it's, it's in the, the plan, right, to extend the runway.
No, but you're here, so you can give me the short answer.
No, 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 I would, I would be happy to tell you, I'd be happy to tell you. It's six hundred and eighty feet, six hundred and seventy feet?
It's number one.
Number, number one, okay, so it's number one.
On the, on the list of projects, it's number one.
Okay, and we're capable of increasing that? That's something we can do? For the price tag of?
Three million dollars.
Okay, all right.
Uh, from, from the federal government.
From the federal government?
Correct, so, you know, we.
That we're hoping to get?
Well, we were at one time hoping to get it, but it's the, the FAA does not subscribe to, if you build it, they will come.
Okay.
Right? You have to, you have to have the numbers to prove it. And we've gone through that early in my tenure here, we got the numbers, but then found out it was a wrong rock exercise. Ravon, go get me a rock, here's a rock, wrong rock, go back again. And we, and we went through a number of iterations, in which we finally realized that.
I can tell your military background there.
We're not gonna be, we're not gonna be able to do this. It's not gonna be able to work, because we don't have it. But we are in the California Aviation System Plan, we are slated to have one, because Hollister has five thousand feet. So let me just, we have forty-five hundred feet. I've gone to Caltrans, it says, can you help me get five hundred feet? And they say, you gotta go to the FAA, and the FAA says you need more airplanes. Well, they, they won't come because it's not long enough.
Okay, so would the crosswind, uh, with shortening or closing the crosswind affect our ability to have larger planes land once we increased the length of our main runway?
I do not believe it would.
Okay, and would those larger planes land on our shorter crosswind runway?
I don't believe they would.
Okay, thank you.
We, we have had one take off from it, but that was, that was an unusual instance, but no, it would, it would not be, it would not be an operational mandate, because these aircraft have certain operating parameters that are many times gate, um, they're made, impacted by their insurance requirements.
Right.
Because you are flying CEOs and wealthy individuals, and you're just not gonna be able to.
Well, I, I like what he said, and I think we need to lengthen our runway. But that's a different conversation, right? Okay, all right.
Yes, it's very different.
Councilmember Clark.
Okay, uh, I remember now, speaking of revenue and money and whatnot, um, it, forgive me and educate me, I'm a novice when it comes to flying, do you have to pay to land?
Watsonville does not have, there are airports with landing fees, Watsonville does not have a landing fee.
Okay, um, so then the crosswind is not producing revenue?
Neither is a primary.
Neither does the primary, yeah, okay. Okay, and if it does get decommissioned, I, I know the tarmac will still be, you know, maintained and whatnot, can it be recommissioned easily, or that's a huge hurdle that we don't wanna deal with?
It could be, yes, it could be reactivated, yes.
I, I, I agree with the sentiment with certain people where it's, you know, shortening it maybe, but getting rid of it completely isn't really worth, you know, it with the potential development that we might have in the future. I mean, on the Buena Vista side, I mean, it's not even the city limits. I mean, that's a pie in the sky thing right now. And on the Watsonville City side, you know, I could see maybe shortening a little bit, but getting rid of it completely, I just don't see right now where that would, you know, really benefit us much, especially since, you know, we are having issues with infilling what we already have and getting businesses to come into this town to generate revenue. I mean, why would we just open up more potential land to just sit empty when it can be used with the crosswind? So that's kind of where I'm at right now, just so you know, since we're at our final statements.
Doug and Dean, the same thing. Councilmember Sosito.
Are we at comment?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make, sometimes I've given comments during question time and gotten chided. So I just wanted.
I think we all do.
Yes. It's been a real honor in my first year at city council to hear so many extensive plans that have been so worked on by the amazing department heads in our city. It is very clear that these were both very thoughtful plans, not only our general planning, but our airport plan. And I don't think of this in terms of a conflict. I do think of it in terms of priority. And everybody with what our footprint is and the limitations we have, we have to make what, the best out of the land that we have. And to me, I am a proponent and an advocate of option three because I believe that it's a reasonable compromise. The airport is a vital infrastructure piece to our community historically, regionally. It hosted our president. There are moments of emergency services where it has just been amazing. But we also have to balance that with, it's used approximately 1,200 flights a year and the potential development around the crosswind areas, I think are substantial. And I don't just see housing. I see housing as a human right. And the human beings that live here need a place to live. As a millennial, we, my generation has seen how hard it is to find housing at all income levels to try and start a family if that's what their choice is. And with the limitations on our city, this is our future. And looking at almost 2,250 potential homes, not even talking about what the commercial potential could be, that's a substantial opportunity. It is not pie in the sky. The Buena Vista area was the negotiated area 20 years ago for what is, what was Measure U. That was the negotiated disposition. We were talking about the urban limit line 20 years ago and it remains in our plan. We were prohibited as Principal Planner Meeks identified in 2010. But the potential of that area for development, for housing, by no means is this closing the airport, but it is, it is tightening its belt a little bit in terms of its impact around the community so that we can have other meaningful development in this area. And we have repetitively gotten sued over and over and over. Every time we try to develop anything in this space, the Ortiz Plan just fell through, right? With litigation. Those were housing for low-income members of our community that we can't have. And so I, I think of housing as a human right. I see this as a balance of priority. I would ask my fellow council members tonight to give direction that is clear. I think number three is, is, is really the clear balance. It's a difficult balance to make, but that's what we are tasked as doing as council people. I understand there's definitely varying opinions here, but I think number three is, shows us the future of the potential in Watsonville.
Thank you. But this is number three, but in your slides is number, is it three? I thought it was a different slide. It was three? Yeah.
The one on the screen. Item three. Three. It's number three.
Yeah. Now, can we go back? Can we go back?
We're on the same team.
Can we go? Yeah. Can we go back to you, what we need to do tonight to pass the master plan? And what is the?
Sure.
The, you know, the recommended actions.
Yes.
Yes. Outline.
Staff will just spare with me for a second.
I'm ready to make a motion. Yeah.
Did we need a motion or did we need?
Motion on the, on the master plan.
So there, there are.
Direction on, on the.
Yes. Mayor, there are three action items for the council to vote on tonight. And they could be taken as one motion or separately. And then four is the direction item. So council could give direction.
So I'm ready to make the motion to adopt the, the third optional items. Because they're very thorough. You know, you do great work. Hopefully I can get a second.
Second, second.
So it's been first and second, so we can move that along and we'll talk about direction.
So these are the three action item, three resolutions, adopting the addendum, the proposed addendum to the environmental impact report. Action on the resolution approving and adopting the implementation of the Watsonville Municipal Airport Master Plan. And then action on resolution approving and adopting the implementation of the Watsonville 2023 Airport Layout Plan.
Yes. With the Rocco.
No, that's after, this is separate.
We're giving direction on that.
Clark?
Aye.
Orozco?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Quiros Carter?
Aye.
Sosito?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
The motion carries.
So now for the direction, do we need to make a mo, formal motion or? How do we, how do you want that?
You can discuss it and then if there's a clear majority, you don't need to vote on it. But if, sorry.
You can discuss it and if there's a clear unanimous majority or unanimous consensus, then we don't need an actual vote.
I'd like to give a direction to bring back two options. So we have a comparison and understanding, which was, if we're going to go off Principal Planner's, Justin Meeks, it would be two and three. If it's yours, I think it's still two and three. Yeah, two and three.
So shortening 1,600 and then completely removing?
Yes.
Might be, sorry, it might be helpful if, if somebody provides the, what the option is when they state it, so it's everybody's clear on, on the options.
Okay.
Okay.
I can do that.
Okay.
I'm a good student at some point.
Option two is the crosswind, wind runway threshold relocation. And then option three would be the deactivation of the crosswind runway 927.
Councilmember Clark.
There, there were two options for shortening it or moving the threshold. Sorry, Rayvon. 870 feet or 1,600 feet? Which one are we talking about?
We're talking about the 1,600 feet.
Okay.
Which is the option two on that, which I assume is, unless I misread it, was option two on this one as well.
Yeah, and approximate.
To 1,590.
Yeah, yeah, approximately.
Yes, approximately 1,600 feet. Is that clarifying? Okay.
I, I, I am in disagreement. We need to move ahead and, and, and just get the option to remove the airport runway, whatever that is.
I agree with Eduardo. Mayor.
For me, I, I think I also am leaning towards the balance approach. I do want to acknowledge the contributions of the airport in regards to economic development, job creation, entertainment for families. And also a resource, serving as a resource during emergencies in addition to offering recreational activities for our local youth and children here in the city of Watsonville. But when I, but when I also think about the needs of our community, especially when I see families, multiple families living under one roof, housing does come as a priority to me. So I do believe that a balanced approach would be a better, the better way to go. So I will be supporting option three for that reason. But I also want to explore the lengthening of the standing runway.
Shortening the option two?
No. So I want to move.
Oh, oh, the original one for the big.
For the big, yeah.
Well, but that's happening no matter what, right? Because that's in the plan.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if anyone can clarify that, that's part of the plan that you approved.
But I support it.
Clark. Oh, okay. So I, I agree with Councilwoman Parker where, you know, come back with shortening it 1,600 feet thereabouts or removing it completely. The fact that it does not create revenue for the city, I was hoping it did, but it doesn't. So, you know, it's not going to be a loss of revenue. And then if it is completely decommissioned, we can still use it in case of emergencies. You know, unless if you can come back with some sort of a, yes.
Just a point of clarification?
Uh huh.
If I may?
Uh huh.
So, yeah, so when you say it doesn't, neither.
Neither of them produce revenue.
You don't charge landing fees.
Yes.
But the, the mere existence of the airport.
Produces a ton of revenue, yes.
Well, no, no. Another way to look at it like this, the more operations we have, the better case we can make for funding.
Yes.
Right, all right. So there is a value there, right? There are no landing fees. The more operations we have, there are aircraft that have the opportunity to fly more. That means they buy more fuel. That means they get more service. That means they get more consumables. The graphics she had with the COGS is what you need to think about. So by looking at it and saying that it doesn't do this, we, we, we tend to miss all the other things that, 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 that are impacted.
All, all the fallout sort of stuff. Just because you don't have a landing fee doesn't mean, yeah, okay, now I see what you're saying. So, but I also want to say this. I, I, with that being said, with, you know, all of the other revenue things that the land or the runway may produce, even though itself does not produce revenue, you know, I'm all about development, but I have a major frustration with the way that the city has been going for quite some time. And we have been building housing all over the place, but it's all been nonprofit, low-income housing. And that doesn't help our city with our tax base. And so taking away from the airport that is potentially giving us revenue to help support everybody within the city and do a more balanced approach. And, you know, the opposite side of that is just completely get rid of the airport. You know, I'm like, I, I just see financial holes everywhere. So that's kind of where I'm at, where I'm like, I want to do this balanced approach. And, you know, if, I would like to see two and three, like Parker. So I'm just going to end my rant.
Can he call on the? Sorry. Can you ask for a comment?
No. That's it.
So just to, just to clarify, can I see the slide with staff recommendations again, please? So at this point, are we just discussing what we're directing staff to for March 1st?
Correct.
Thank you. So I would like to see option two and three. Thank you.
So that direction works, right? So we can just bring options, both of those options back to you. I mean, the decision point's going to happen when you see everything and you see all that, you have that discussion. So I think we get the balanced approach. I get where the council wants to go. So we'll bring back a much thorough discussion of your combination about the airport and also city needs. We'll bring it, bring it back to you. All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much. With that, oh, we still have public comment. And our public comment. Yeah, 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 yeah. So now we're going to open up for, for public general comment that is not agendaized. Agendaized. No. And do we have, this is an opportunity for, for the community to come, talk to us about things that are not on the agenda.
As, as, just to remind everyone, Mr. Mayor, that the general public comment was continued to the end of the agenda because we had a full meeting scheduled. So this is the end.
Seeing no, no one, I'm bringing it back to anybody, nobody in Zoom. So any council member like to say anything on?
I would like to request that all presentations be given to the city council members when the agenda is given to the city council members. Anybody want a second, third and fifth, seventh that? Thank you.
Second.
I'm just going to caution that the presentations are not necessarily going to be thorough because they're not meant to replace what's on the agenda. They're, they're meant to kind of prompt the presentation, so.
No, I totally get that. But the fact is, there's always surprises in there. And, and, and in all honesty, it's nice to have that presentation because thinking takes place over time when it soaks in. And even though it may be in the agenda, there are details quite frequently, I've seen so many presentations, that then I have to, not that I shouldn't think during a meeting, but then it would, it's further thinking that I wish I had more time so I could ask more cogent questions.
I get that. So that's why, we'll, we'll, we'll get that. All right. Any emergency items added to the agenda? Communication. Where are we? Oral communication from the council? Anybody want to, do any oral communication? Mayor Potem, Quiros Carter.
All right, thank you for indulging me. I will be very quick. So I, I spoke with my mother at the Paharo Valley Shelter Services Shelter to Home Event last Thursday. This Thursday, you can see it on the screen, hopefully, October 26th, District Two will be having a meeting, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. It will be regarding traffic. And hopefully we have more information from what we saw today. There will be time for people to ask questions. And have fun and be safe for Halloween. We, we give out candy every year. If you know my house, if you know, you know. So come on by and we'll be very happy to see you in your costume.
With that, I think that's a, thank you for carrying that. Any requests for scheduled future items? I know I, I have one, a small pet peeve, like I always do for whatever reason. We, we just need to be more conscious. We, we put a lot of lip service on bicycle lanes and, and we never do anything. We build all Freedom Boulevard, no bike lanes. No visible bike lanes. We, you know, we're, we're, we're paving some of the roads, no bike lanes. And then, but we do a lot of lip service that we need to ride bikes. Makes no sense. So we need to come up with a policy or strategy to, you know, if we're, if we're paving a road, you know, do bike lanes and stop doing the lip service. So thank you. That's it. With that, no emergency items. We're adjourned. Thank you.